All right. Good evening, everyone. We have reconvened from closed session and there is nothing to report out, so we will adjourn the special meeting at 6:20 PM. And turn over to, I would like to call to order the parking authority of the City of Elk Grove regular meeting for Wednesday, July 26, 2023, at 6:20 PM. And will the secretary do the roll call and provide the statement?
Indeed. For the roll call for the parking authority, I will do a visual roll call noting all members are present. For the standing authority of the parking authority, it is the membership of the city council. There is no additional stipend or payments that are made for participation on the parking authority by the city council. But they are one in the same entity. But we will continue on with the parking authority meeting.
All right. At this time, I'll open the public comment opportunity. Nobody has signed up for this. I'll close the public comment opportunity and look for our presentation.
And that is our presentation, which is the annual update on the parking authority. I will turn it over to Finance Director Pollan.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. There is no action to report for the parking authority.
All right. Well, that was easy. All right. I will open up the public comment opportunity. Still, no one signed up. I'll close the public comment opportunity. And at this time, we will go ahead and adjourn the parking authority regular meeting at 6:21 PM. And that will take us to our regular meeting. I would like to call to order the Elk Grove City Council regular meeting. Today is Wednesday, July 26, 2023. It is 6:21 PM. Clerk.
Thank you, Mayor. This meeting of the Elk Grove City Council will be cable cast on Metro Cable 14, the local government affairs channel on the Comcast Consolidated Communications and AT&amp;T U-verse Cable Systems. The meeting is closed caption. It will be webcast at metro14live.saccounty.gov. Tonight's meeting will replay on Friday, July 28 at 1 PM and Monday, July 31, again at 1 PM on Channel 14. Previous meetings can be viewed online at www.eltgrovecity.org or youtube.com/metrokable14. For members of the participating audience who may have personal electronic devices, please place them on silent mode during the meeting or on mute when you are not speaking. Elk Grove City Council welcomes, appreciates, and encourages participation in the city council meeting. City council requests that you limit your presentation to three minutes per person so that all present will have time to participate. City council reserves the right to reasonably limit the total time for public comment on any particular notice agenda item as it may deem necessary. Pursuant to Resolution Number 2010-24, no individual speaker concerning public comment may address the city council for more than three minutes. If you wish to address the council during the meeting, please complete one of the blue speaker cards, which can be found at the back of the chamber and provide it to Assistant City Clerk Brenda Haggard prior to consideration of the agenda item. And with that, Mayor, I will move into the roll call. And for the roll call, I will start with Councilmember Robles.
Present.
Councilmember Brewer.
Here.
Councilmember Suen.
Here.
Vice Mayor Spies.
Present.
And Mayor Singh Allen.
All right. Thank you. And next up is our Pledge of Allegiance. I'd like to call on our Councilmember Brewer to lead us in the pledge.
Hand over your heart. Ready? Begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Thank you. At this time, please join me for a brief moment of silence. Thank you. Next up is our approval of the agenda. May I get a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Closed session.
Under Section 3, there are no closed session items on the regular agenda, which will advance us to Section 4, our presentations and announcements. And that one presentation item is the new hire introductions.
All right. Wonderful. Our new hires and introductions.
All right. Good evening, Madam Mayor, Vice Mayor, Members of the City Council, Jason Barron, City Managers. Always our pleasure giving the opportunity to introduce you to some of our new hires over the last quarter, as well as those who have been recently promoted. So we'll go ahead and start with our Police Department and Assistant Chief Paul Solomon.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor and Council. I get the distinct pleasure of going through our new introduction hires along with promotion with Chief Davis taking on vacation, so this is exciting for me. First one we're going to start with. George, why don't you come up? This is Police Officer George Ramos. He came to us April 10 of 2023. A little bit about George. He was born and raised in Modesto, California. He received his bachelor's degree from CSU Stanislaw. George graduated from the San Juan King Delta College Academy in April of 2023. Outside of work, George enjoys weightlifting, hanging out with his two-year-old dog, Bruce, playing video games and watching anime. Next up is Police Officer Brian Arroso. All right. Brian came to us on May 19 of 2023. Brian was born in Fontana, California and raised in Wilton. He attended Sheldon High School and received his degree from the United States Sports Academy. Prior to his law enforcement career, Brian spent 15 years coaching football, including positions at Sheldon High School, Pleasant Grove High School, American River College, Fresno State University, and CSU Sacramento. Quite the resume there. Prior to joining Elk Grove, Brian worked for Sacramento PD for approximately five years and Folsom PD for four years. Next up, we have CSO Brian Casper. Brian came to us on June 5 of 2023. Brian was born in Santa Clara and moved to Elk Grove when he was 10. Brian graduated from Laguna Creek High School and is currently attending CSU Sacramento. Prior to working at the Elk Grove Police Department, Brian worked at Trustee for two years. Away from work, Brian enjoys bowling, which has been his hobby for the past 13 years. Next up, we have Police Records Tech One Ashley Marquez. Ashley came to us on June 5 of 2023. Ashley was born in Vallejo and raised in Elk Grove. She attended Monterey Trails High School. She earned her Bachelor of Science in Criminal Justice from CSU Sacramento. Growing up, Ashley was a huge Red Sox fan, but she has since converted to being a huge San Francisco Giants fan. Is that true? All right. This one's especially impactful for me. This is Supervising Forensic Investigator Iris Ott, a promotion. I had the pleasure of ending up being mentor mentee for a program with her last year, so we got to know each other quite a bit and it's been great to see her journey. Iris was promoted on June 25 of 2023. Prior to joining the Elk Grove Police Department in October, she joined us in October 2016. Prior to joining Elk Grove PD, Iris worked at the Stockton Police Department for over six years. Iris has a master's degree in forensic science and is a certified senior crime scene analyst with the International Association for Identification. Next up, we have Police Officer Julie Kent. Julie came to us on June 25 of 2023. Julie was born and raised in Lodi, California. Before joining the Elk Grove Police Department, Julie had been volunteering in many capacities, including on the Chavacy Board of Directors, the San Juan King County Fallen Officer Memorial Foundation. She has been married for 17 years and has two teenage children. Julie enjoys competing in CrossFit events, reading, and cheering on her children at their various sporting events. Welcome, Julie. And our final one for you today is Police Officer Tyler Lanceberger. Tyler was promoted to Police Officer. He went to the academy on June 25 of 2023. Tyler was born in Lodi and raised in Elk Grove, where he attended Franklin High School and Sacramento City College. Prior to joining the Elk Grove Police Department, Tyler worked at the Old Spaghetti Factory for six years and Public House Downtown for 18 months. Tyler's hobbies include hunting, fishing, and golf. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Next, we have our Human Resources Department, Alyssa Russ. Andrina, who's been helping out already.
Yes. Good evening. I'm super, super excited to introduce Andrina Carter to the Human Resources Department. She's our newest Human Resources Specialist. Andrina is originally from Oklahoma, but she's been in California for about 13 years. She attended Langston University, where she earned her bachelor's degree in organizational management. After relocating her family to Elk Grove in 2020, Andrina worked for the Department of Motor Vehicles as a motor vehicle representative. And prior to that, she worked for the Riverside Transit Agency Human Resources Department for over six years. Andrina will be working primarily in recruitment and selection in support of the police department. And in just the short time that she's been here, Andrina is already incredibly loved and appreciated by our law enforcement family. Andrina has shared with me that her and her husband chose to relocate their family to Elk Grove based on recommendations that they received about the schools and the neighborhoods here. And I'm so glad they did that because we have her in our community and on our team. You're welcome.
All right. Next, we have Daryl Dunn, Economic Development Director.
Good evening. I am absolutely thrilled to introduce Tashawna Mann, our newest employee in the Office of Economic Development. Tashawna was born and raised in Riverside, California. She attended UC Berkeley. She double majored in political economy and Southeast Asian studies, so she's real smart. After college, she was employed in technology sales for five years, but then she decided she wanted to make a difference. So in 2021, she moved from the Bay Area to Sacramento for graduate school. She is currently attending California State University Sacramento. She is wrapping up her master's degree in public administration, no, public policy and administration, which she expects to have done soon. And she also interned for the City Managed Department in 2022. So she is an intern who came through our system. Now we have hired her. She did a lot of work on Measure E. And we are just absolutely excited to have her. Thank you.
All right. Next up, our Finance Department, Nat Pollan, Director.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I have two employees to introduce to you. The first is Vijay Mesuria. He apologizes he could not be here this evening because he's a little under the weather. But you will get to know him well because he'll be taking Renee's place and making all of the presentations of your favorite items on the agenda, all the CFD annexations. So he started as our new finance analyst on June 5. He holds a bachelor's degree in business admin and a master's degree in accounting from USC. Before coming to the city, he worked in the construction and real estate industry as an acquisitions analyst and multifamily estimator. He also spent four years in the United States Marine Corps and served in two combat deployments during Operation Iraq Freedom. Vijay and his family reside here in Elk Grove. So Kathy, would you like to come on up? This is Kathy Lanceberger. She returned to the Finance Department as our new senior payroll technician in April. She started at the city in 2005 as a payroll technician and moved to code enforcement in 2009. In 2014, she became a code enforcement officer and worked in that capacity until returning to finance. She had 23 years of payroll experience prior to working in code enforcement. You just met Kathy's son Tyler earlier this evening as a new police officer in our police department here. And they live here in Elk Grove. So, thank you.
All right. Finally, our Public Works Department, Public Works Director Jeff Horner.
Good evening, everyone. Nice to see you this evening. First up, we have Brett Duffy. Brett is our inaugural street sweeper operator. We're pleased to bring that program to the residents of Elk Grove. He joined our, he's actually a graduate from Elk Grove High School and has been a street sweeper operator for the city of Sacramento for the last 12 years. Brett also has experience operating heavy equipment, and his knowledge, experience, and positive attitude, which I always appreciate, will be a very welcome addition to our team. Next up is Natalie Machado. Natalie started as an intern with the City of Elk Grove's Recycling Waste Division while she was completing her Master of Public Administration program at McGeorge. After graduating, she rejoined our operations team as an administrative analyst, supporting again the Recycling and Waste Division. Natalie loves going to concerts, running, and baking on her free time. Welcome, Natalie.
Thank you.
Next up is Frida Morales. Frida is an administrative analyst in our Engineering Services Division. She previously worked for the City of Citrus Heights and we're very happy to have her here at Elk Grove. She has 18 years of experience in the public works field. There is not, I haven't yet to find one thing that Frida does not have experience working on. So I'm going to keep trying. I'm going to keep challenging her all the time. But she's definitely a valuable addition. She's a Sac State alumni with a bachelor's degree in sociology, and she enjoys reading, exploring new wineries and restaurants, and spending time with family and friends. Welcome, Frida. Next up is Navid Atai. He began working with the city in April as a public works inspector in our encroachment permits section. He has a bachelor's degree in business administration, an associate's degree in construction management, and various certifications, making him a very well-rounded inspector and valuable member of our team. He has nearly 10 years of experience as an inspector, previously working in the Bay Area. Navid is passionate about serving his community. He's an Elk Grove resident, and his hobbies include road biking and CrossFit. Welcome, Navid. Next is Kimberly Taylor. She is our new Recycling and Waste Manager. Kim started with us in June as a very welcome addition to the Public Works Management Team. She comes to us from Portland, Oregon, most recently working for Metro Regional Government in their Waste Prevention and Environmental Services Department. She has 10 years of experience in the recycling and waste field, in addition to more than 15 years in community education and outreach, which will serve her well in this position. Welcome, Kim. Next, we have James Ashby, our new Traffic Engineering Division Manager, another very welcome addition to our management team. James graduated from Sac State with a degree in civil engineering. He has worked in the traffic engineering industry for five years and is hoping to bring new and innovative traffic technologies to reduce congestion and collisions in Elk Grove. He enjoys golfing almost every weekend and named his Great Dane "Birdie", so he can always say he got a birdie. Welcome, James. Next, we have Ulysses Betancourt, Maintenance Technician 2. He comes from the city of Stockton, where he worked as a street maintenance worker. He lives in Stockton with his wife and two dogs. And during his time off, he enjoys spending time with his family, eating good food, and watching scary movies. Next up is Ulysses Partner in Crime Jorge Lopez Tabarez. Jorge comes as a Maintenance Technician 1, comes to us from Caltrans, where he worked as a California Highway Maintenance Worker. He has seven years' experience in the construction industry and graduated from Franklin High School. He lives in Elk Grove, loves sports, plays soccer, and coaches his son's soccer team. Welcome, Jorge. And last but not least, we have Jacque Crane. Welcome, Jacque. Jacque is also a street sweeper operator. Came to us just shortly after Brett joined us. He has six years' experience as a street sweeper operator and most recently comes to us from Clean Street, a contract street sweeping company in Sacramento. He currently lives in Elk Grove, is a Los Angeles Clippers and Las Vegas Raiders fan. He enjoys photography, comedy shows, music festivals, and traveling with family and friends. Welcome, Jacque.
All right. Excellent. Excellent. Lots of new hires. So congratulations to everybody. And for those that are new to our city, welcome to Elk Grove. Proud to have you. Thank you. All right. We will transition now over to our public comments. We have a number of speakers lined up to speak this evening. And as a reminder, you have three minutes to speak. And I'd like to welcome back Mr. Kirk Thompson.
Hi. Last month, when I spoke here, I had no intention of mentioning the sexually explicit materials available in our local public school libraries at this meeting. I had hoped I was going to be able to be my normal nerdy self, be able to complain about your budget priorities and why the pothole down the street from me hasn't been filled since 2017, or how the rent is just too damn high. But Madam Mayor, at the last meeting, you effectively called me a liar in front of roughly 50 people in this room, half of whom are high school kids, in what I'm guessing was an attempt to gaslight me. And since you're not my wife, I can't let that stand without a response. The two books I've mentioned as most objectionable are titled, This Book is Gay, which teaches kids how to use sex apps, and Gender Queer, which shows underage kids engaging in various sexual activities. On the very day you accused me of lying, This Book is Gay was listed as available in Edward Harris Middle School Library. Were you trying to say that it wasn't there at all during the school year? Let's move on to Gender Queer. Gender Queer was listed as available in Sheldon High School as late as April 26, 2023, three months ago, during the most recent school year. This book was purchased, and here's the purchase order, showing it was purchased in October 2022. This would suggest that it was available during most of last school year. It would also be very odd to say that the books are not available in the schools when several of the school librarians have spoken at the school board meetings defending the addition of these books to the library shelves. So am I lying, or the school librarian's lying? Now, I have to admit that Gender Queer being available in a high school rather than a middle school means that what I said at the last meeting was, as the mayor put it, not factually true. You were right. This pornographic book is not available to kids as young as 12. It is available to kids as young as 14. That's so much better. Oh, but the book that teaches kids to sign up for sex apps, that's still available to kids 12 years old. Congratulations on mastering that basic politician skill of being factual but not accurate. Well done, you. Madam Mayor, Members of the Council, I hope my words have taught you a few valuable lessons today. First, I was right and you were wrong. Second, if the school board is telling you that these books are not available in the public school libraries, they are lying to you. And if they aren't lying to you and they have removed these books from the libraries, that means the school board isn't being transparent with parents, which you, as a former school board member, should find troubling. And finally, and most importantly, don't ever call me a liar again. Because, as I think I've established today, I bring receipts.
Thank you, sir. Thank you for your comments. And as a reminder once again that the city council has no jurisdiction or authority on school district matters. Anybody who has questions regarding curriculum or any other matters should take it up with the school board in the school district. Thank you very much. So we will move on to our next speaker, who is Justin Raga, followed by Mary Ann Simpson.
Hi. Thank you for this opportunity to address the council. My family and I have been residents of Elk Grove since 2008, and we have two sons, one of whom is involved in the arts. So I'm here to update the city on Musical Mayhem Productions, a 501(c)(3) educational nonprofit. We have had a booth at District 56 in the past, and I think some of you may have seen some of our shows. For those of you that don't know, Musical Mayhem is the only youth theater group in the area. It was founded in 2012, and we first started with them, my family started with them in 2013, when my son was just four years old. And we've seen the benefits firsthand, as my son is now 14, and MMB has been a part of him. Musical Mayhem provides our community with a space where every student learns the basics of theater education. MMP offers summer camps and homeschool workshops and is inclusive of students with special needs. They produce quality productions while also offering a unique Master Academy program that develops their skills in acting, dance, vocal, social, emotional wellness with quality instructors. The Master Academy participates in the junior theater festivals here in Sacramento, like I'm wearing, and across the nation, where we were featured in the Elk Grove Citizen in 2021 for our accomplishments in Texas. Students of MMP have been recognized with outstanding productions in Atlanta as well. Since Elk Grove has no theater venue yet, which would generate more revenue for our city than not having a theater, Musical Mayhem Productions has had to be creative in finding art spaces. They usually rent out Elk Grove School District high school theaters, and with the COVID closures, they've had to outsource to the greater Sacramento area. One of our hopes for the city is to have a theater. So our ask is two things: secure a space for our very own Elk Grove Theater. I know that's a big ask, but I know the rightade building just came up available a couple months ago, and the library got that. So I'm hoping that maybe if another building comes up, we can think theater. And our second ask is to come out to see some shows and support our youth. The next show is this weekend, Seussical Jr. at the Kasuma Stokes Black Box Theater. And there's more information at mmpkids.com. Maybe there will be another Greta Gerwig coming out of Elk Grove. Thank you for your support and hope to see you there.
Thank you. Mary Ann Simpson, followed by Estella Drake.
My name is Mary Ann Polemas Simpson. I have lived in Elk Grove all my life. My dad's family's been here since the gold rush. I currently live in the community of Del Webb Glenbrook, off of Bruceville Road. I would like to bring up the issue of illegal fireworks and have the city address the problem and come up with a valid solution to the issue. You can't just push it off on the police and fire departments. It's been a major issue that's getting, isn't getting resolved and is becoming worse. Where I live, like many areas within the city, it has become a war zone on July 4. They shoot off illegal fireworks such as M80s, M100s, which sounds like gunfire and small explosions. For someone like me who has suffered from PTSD, it's horrible and makes you want to take justice in your own hands. It's that bad. There have been numerous complaints on Nextdoor regarding what it's doing to pets, those with PTSD, along with the fear of houses burning down. I personally had a friend whose dog died from a heart attack because of this. There's also been a lady whose dog jumped through a closed window because of it. The police department claims to be on it and enforcing with drones and helicopters, but they are rarely seen. They have yet to produce any numbers regarding the enforcement. When you do call the police department, they won't even take a report unless you have an exact address, which makes it almost impossible to do anonymously and can create retaliation, since you have to be standing in front of the offender's address. Because of this, many don't get reported, and it continues to get worse. The neighborhood across Bruceville for me has a large amount of illegal fireworks. They put these products on ladders, and many shoot off into the air, showering hot pieces onto neighboring houses. Many feared their house will catch fire. In my area, we cannot see the large legal firework displays such as Elk Grove Park. The park is overcrowded and way too far from us. There are other large displays, but these are private, member-only places that won't allow you, which is kind of unfair to the neighbors. Some solutions that have been mentioned by others are impose larger fines, have more officers dedicated to enforcement, have designated spaces to set off the fireworks such as parks, have fireworks permits, or ban fireworks altogether. I am asking the city to address this issue and actively do something about it. It might be beneficial to ask the public to weigh in.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Next up is Estella Drake, and then Paula Scheckelman. I'm sure I'll be corrected. Sorry.
So I hope you guys enjoy your gift. Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. I am here today to share an observation that has been keeping me up at night. Since I've been attending the meetings, I have observed the wonderful recognitions where people and groups are recognized and the photo shoot that takes place. Don't get me wrong. This is truly a wonderful event and exception. And yes, with the exception of the ignored good Samaritans who have not even been recognized or considered for a special acknowledgement or recognition for what they do day and night to help the animals at the shelter in our community. This is heartbreaking. Since last year, the wonderful animal lovers, along with the shelter volunteers and the Elk Grove Shelter staff, have worked tirelessly to spay and neuter and save the cats of our beautiful city. I am asking, why are the trappers here month after month sharing the need to save the animals with a simple request to hire a second vet or a part-time vet? And they have been completely ignored with the excuse after excuse to simply, and simply to listen to crickets. Remember my crickets? My favorite saying is, "It takes a village, and actions speak louder than words." As you all know, a month ago, we, or months ago, we only had around 50 kittens at the shelter, right? Well, now we have about 125 or 150 cats and kittens. You ignore the solution, and now we have an epidemic that affects our volunteer heroes and all the poor shelter staff and volunteer volunteers. and all the poor shelter staff and volunteers and foster families, because we don't have enough either. Please wake up and smell the roses or the catnip. Today, we declared July 26, TNR Community Trapper Hero Day. Thank you because actions speak louder than words, and what we always hear is crickets, crickets, crickets. Do something, please. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. And enjoy. Thank you. With the city manager, can you just remind us when the next, when we do have this scheduled for a city council meeting?
Yep.
As an agenda item?
Agenda for August 9.
August 9. We'll be discussing this very issue.
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Paula Scheckelman, and then Maria C.
And Ms. Scheckelman did submit a PowerPoint presentation to accompany her comments. There were some graphic images that were inside of the submitted presentation, so we do have a version that is redacted in terms of going up onto the systems, but I'll pull that up now to accompany her comments.
Good evening, Mayor Singh Allen and the council members. First, I want to say that all of us here are totally in support of the hardworking folks at the Elk Grove Animal Shelter, but they are being overworked. They are busting their butts each and every day trying to keep up. There are many recent concerns that back up this fact that more help is needed. On Sunday, July 9, we found this injured kitty that you may see on the PowerPoint. It was trapped, and as is usual protocol, the injured cat was brought to the Elk Grove Animal Shelter. Unfortunately, there was no vet on, on staff. On Monday, July 10, I was contacted by the shelter vet and was told this was an old injury. She, the cat, was given a Kovinia 10-day antibiotic shot, and it was okay to put her back out. The wounded leg was bleeding. I explained we had a foster as we had concerns about it becoming infected, and was told that if the cat started biting its leg or foot, then it may need to be amputated. But there was not resources at the shelter to do this. Coincidentally, I have a cat that I trapped a year ago, January 28 last year, and it had a fractured leg, so severely fractured that the leg was amputated by the shelter. I fostered that kitty while recovering, and I still have that cat to this day. What has changed that same treatment wasn't done for this kitty in question? Thankfully for the, for this cat, there is a benefactor and an offer to cover medical costs. We got a second opinion from a local veterinarian, and she was quite concerned about the severe leg injury. It was recommended that the leg be amputated. Since we had a foster to care for the cat, the benefactor agreed to pay approximately $3,000 needed for surgery. By the way, the shelter had told us this was a spayed female. The veterinarian informed me, at the, at the veterinarian, informed me that this cat was actually a neutered male. What the heck is going on at our local shelter? At a second issue, I have been fostering a five-week-old kitten. It had a cough, but was playing and eating, and I was told to monitor it. Two weeks later, it developed a fever, and it was not eating, had become quite lethargic. I was able to bring the kitten in. It had 105 temperature. I was told the kitten had never received the original vaccinations that all kittens get at their first evaluation, nor the normal flea treatment. Kitten was given its vaccinations and antibiotics. It is now doing well, but what is going on at the shelter that normal protocols are being missed? And can, these can have a serious effect on the animals and their foster families. We need a second veterinarian desperately. I would address TNR cancellation dates, but that, someone else is covering that. Seems we are going to have a kitten explosion next year, too. The last few females TNR'd have either been pregnant or lactating. What is going on at our shelter when days are being closed for TNR? As we all know, the shelter is over capacity. Why is this not making sense to the ones who have control over the changes that are needed? We need a second vet and more TNR spots. Thank you.
Thank you, Paula. Next up is James McCarthy, followed by, oh, did I skip someone? I apologize. Maria C. Where did that go? Yes, Maria C., sorry. I jumped four speakers, sorry.
Hello. So every institution in Elk Grove has money. They have money for traveling, they have money for road construction, anything that they need. The Elk Grove Animal Shelter does not have what they need to properly do what they need. You guys paid $30,000 for an agency to have you guys have, tell the animal shelter that they need three animal assistant positions. They need another vet. This problem is now coming down all the way to Sacramento. I am a Sacramento citizen, I'm not from Elk Grove. You guys are taking cats away from CSN, the Community Spay and Neuter Clinic. You guys are taking away spay and neutrers from SBCA because there's not enough vets. Do you realize how hard it is to have one vet just for a whole shelter? It's a very strenuous job. Vets from all the spay and neutrers that they do develop arthritis, they, it's a very strenuous on their body. For you to have, put all that pressure on just one vet is unacceptable. That vet, you're lucky that you still have that vet working for you, because you know what? When she's gone and she comes back, I can imagine how much stress she has coming to her because she has, she's backed pet track because there's nobody to fill her position when she's gone. SBAC can do it, right? They have four vets. They are able to have vet technicians, they're able to have people that are interns, they're able to, they're, they're, not technicians, but interns, they're able to have exactly what they need to be spay, able to spay 80 cats, just ferrets on a Sunday. We're not alone talking about all the domestic and other ferrets they do throughout the week. I honestly want to know, how do you sleep at night training these animals the way you do? I took in three kittens at Elk Grove Shelter a month ago. They were healthy kittens, they deserved a chance. And you know what they told me? They can't accept the kittens because they're two months old. You know what? If I was to foster those kittens, they wouldn't have been able to be adopted till they're four, five months because they're so backed up in spay and neuter. Do you realize how hard that is to be able to, to take away a kitten that could, that somebody deserves? And most of these kittens are getting adopted out by the time they're almost adult cats. That is not fair. Somebody who wants a kitten, wants a kitten, they don't want it to wait however long that they need to have it in foster. Do you realize that this is also coming bad down? It's not only in the shelters, it's coming down in the fosters, because while they're holding a cat that they should, the kitten that they should have adopted out, they could already had other litters of kittens that can, that can fill their spots. It's, it's coming down in the rescues, it's coming down in the trappers like myself. This is all coming down to everybody. And you know what also? If your vet quits tomorrow, what are you gonna do? What are you gonna do? Do you have any answers? Do you know how hard it is to find a vet right now? Do you know that we're experiencing a vet shortage here in the United States, let alone in California? Do you realize that? And I also want to know, how do you sleep at night? How do you sleep at night knowing that these animals are suffering the street, that we can't take other kittens, that we can't take healthy cats because there's not enough space? Why? Because there's not enough spay and neuter. They cannot move the animals like they need to do. Does that make you feel good? Do you sleep, do you, do you feel good that you've, that you've been putting off these people that come every week, or every county, county meeting, trying to get you guys to hire a vet, and you guys are blatantly ignoring them? You're doing it the service to the public. You're doing it the service to everybody. The shelter, they're tired, they're exhausted. They, we all deserve more. We need answers, and we need another vet. That's all we're asking for is another vet. There's no more excuses.
Thank you. Thank you. Next up is Kat Mendoza, followed by Kimberly Mendoza.
And the Mendoza's each submitted a PowerPoint presentation or a visual presentation to accompany their comments, and I will pull those up as they come up to the speaker podium.
Okay, so my first slide is just a few of the cancellations that came up throughout the year. 22 spots around December, January, 16 spots, May, June. In July, we had 22 spots canceled, including tomorrow. So I have to find a different place to take a kitten that I trapped in Elk Grove for a neuter surgery. The numbers are increasing. So this is between May 2022 and May 2023. You can see the numbers jumped from 190 to 224 cats that we're taking in. June 2022 to June 2023, it jumped from 143 cats to 285 cats. Almost twice as many TNRs, twice as many animals were fostered, and twice as many cats were taken in this June. So going off of what Maria just said, I actually turned in some kittens that we trapped in Elk Grove on June 4. I'm still fostering them. I don't have to turn them in until tomorrow. From June 4 until now, that is almost what, two months that I've had kittens? I could have had different litters of kittens, but I had the same ones because they're so backtracked with only one vet. We need a second vet so they can spay and neuter the kittens that we have, so we don't have to hold them as long. Going off of what the city manager said, we're relying on the expertise of our staff, we're relying on the expertise of a consultant that we hired early this year, City Gate Associates. Well, what is the staff saying? According to CBS News, they are saying we are at a point where every single kennel is occupied. I think 46 out of 55 cat kennels are occupied. They're saying that they're on track to have double the number of kittens compared to last year. They need that outflow, like I just mentioned, to continue and increase as being overcapacity has become the new normal. But what about our expertise? Many of us have begun feeding colonies, trapping, fostering, et cetera, before the shelter even opened in 2019. So our question still remains, what is the city of Elk Grove plan to do?
Are you done with your comments, ma'am?
No, I was just waiting to see if you would respond, because you don't.
No, it's not a public, it's not an agendized item. This is public comment.
Hey, you don't respond to our emails, you don't respond to.
We have responded, ma'am. We have an agenda item coming up to discuss this fully.
Also, we'll be able to have a conversation on that agenda item?
Yes, as, as the city manager indicated.
Oh, that was never indicated until today we heard August 9.
It was mentioned at the last meeting as well, but I'm sorry that you might have missed that. Thank you.
I didn't hear it. Thank you.
Okay. You're, yeah, no problem. Thank you. Next up, Kimberly Mendoza, followed by Dana Jacob.
Okay, good evening. So to begin, to recap, we have approximately 20,000 community cats. And just to reiterate, there is not enough spay and neuter surgeries. They fill up within minutes. TNR was closed twice due to inadequate staff. So what I, what information I received was vet staff that want to go on vacation, they do not have relief texts. That means they closed program. That means that we lost 20 potential surgeries. As others have said, the shelter has a list of animals waiting for surgery at the shelter and in foster homes. And I don't expect the vet to add more spay and neuter surgeries on the schedule when there's so many kittens that she has to get through. And for reference, the shelter has 55 cat kennels plus the foster homes. And I wanted to briefly go over the quality of life for community cats. So here we have trauma, starvation elements, diseases. According to the American Veterinary Medical Association, the welfare of these cats may be significantly diminished, their life expectancy is radically reduced due to death from trauma, disease, and starvation and weather extremes. These same factors may also contribute to an overall poor quality of life. Friendly cats, along with feral cats, have the same pathway. There's not enough space. They get TNR, friendly or not, and they are sent out to die from trauma, weather extremes, diseases. As you already saw from Paula's presentation, cats that need attention can't get it because they're so backed up. They have so many things to do. And so it just, it's wrong for us to not step up and try to prevent more cats from being born to suffer outside. Prevention is key. We need to prioritize spay and neuter, and we can't do that with only one vet. We have, I mean, approximately 80% of kittens originate from a community cat. We need to get the community cats spayed and neutered, and it's not enough with only 16 surgeries when they are open and when they have staff. It is unacceptable to not provide adequate staff to allow for vacation time without needing to close the TNR program. They need more staff. And I have a question for Councilmember Spees. Have you come up with any solutions? I know we previously emailed. You had mentioned not, from a business perspective, there's other solutions that do not involve hiring a second vet. I'm curious if you have, if you can get to the email since it's a public comment, if you have any solutions. Mayor, I know you were supposed to talk to the city manager. If, if I fundraise, will that be, will he be authorized to accept it? And can this pay for a second vet? And just to think big, maybe a nonprofit spay and neuter clinic, what can we do to make this a council priority project? And I have a petition, over 1,000 signatures, I will turn in.
Thank you. Thank you, ma'am. Looking forward to having a good discussion at our August meeting about this.
And if I could answer as well in very much the same fashion, Ms. Mendoza. August, I know you can't hear me, hang on, I'll wait. Ms. Mendoza, August 9 is when we'll, we'll have the meeting and have a good constructive conversation about it. Okay?
Thank you. All right, next up is Dana Jacob, followed by Diane Schramagnello. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Dana. Can't read my notes. Again, on the shelter, same as pretty much everybody's saying, is that they are so backed up, they are letting their staff go with no backup, no alternate vet, no other volunteer vets. On June 16, I brought in the three remaining of five kittens, and they were going out to foster, is what I was told. Three weeks later, on July 6, I get a call from Dr. Mary Spice that they have three cats for me to pick up. And I thought, what, three cats? So I called, and they said, these three kittens are ready for you to pick up. And I said, they hadn't gone to foster, and they were spayed on that day. So three weeks later, they've been sitting in a cage, never contacted me to let me know what was going on with them, and they were spayed. So they were three weeks behind. They closed the 14 R days, like these guys have said. So 14 R days were closed this month. That's multiple cats that have not been trapped and fixed, which then do the math, there's a female's gonna have four to six kittens every four months. That is out of control on the population, and there's limited trappers. We need help. These are community cats. They're not just trapper cats. They're not, there isn't enough help around there. We need that. We need backup vets, vets for the TNR. We need help trapping, we need help with everything. This is not our, it's a community issue. It's not our issue. We're having to care for them, feed them. The feeding stations are being taken away. We're having to get vet help. It's just, it's a lot for a foster home, and it's a lot for a trapper to take on. And why do trappers have to take it on? So, oh, and one weekend, I'm also a volunteer at the shelter. One weekend I was volunteering, and people were coming through and looking for the kittens, and there, out of probably 30 kittens, there was only one available for adoption. The rest were waiting for spay and neutering. And this doesn't say that we need another vet. Sorry, I'm not good at this. And then, a lot of.
You're doing fine.
A lot of, I have a dog, and I take her to the dog park. There are so many people that don't even know we have a shelter. They said Elk Grove has a shelter, and then they don't know what services we have. So where is the education to let our community know we have a shelter? Where's the flyers or whatever to let anybody know what we, what services we have and that we even have a shelter? I think there should be more community output, whether in our monthly newsletters, something at the stores where they're tableing, letting people know about TNR, and because neighborhoods have them everywhere, and people don't realize, they just don't do anything about it. So then they sit there multiplying. Thank you.
Thank you. No, you're, thank you. Diane Schramagnello, and then James McCarthy.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I think Maria and Kat and Dana have pretty much said everything I was going to say, but I will, you know, briefly tell you my story, too. I do foster and I do trap, and I also feed a colony and help a couple of my fellow trappers. I do foster and I do trap, and I also feed a colony and help a couple of my fellow trappers, helping them out as well, trapping cats. Currently, I do have foster kittens as well. They were checked in on six thirteen in June, and I was just told that on eight seven that I could bring them in to get spayed. So I, too, will have them for two months. When I took, when I first got them, they were nine months and fourteen, or sorry, nine weeks and fourteen weeks. So they're gonna be pretty much grown cats as well. Also, I did meet a lady yesterday who told me that she had a trapped cat, and she had been trying for several weeks to get it into the Elk Grove Shelter, and she couldn't get it in. So she moved it into a crate, and I, she was asking me how, how I could assist her in getting the cat in. And I said, you can take it to the SPCA if you're willing to get up at four in the morning, or three in the morning, drive over there. And she's, she did text me today and said that she got the cat in, and she was number one in line. However, she had to transfer the cat because she didn't think it was fair to the cat to be in a trap that long, two weeks. So she had it in a crate, and she ended up in emergency because the cat had scratched her and bit her, because it's a feral cat, and she was transferring it over. Also, I wanted to talk about the new system. They did change our system. However, sometimes we cannot log into it at six o'clock. It's later now. It's kind of a crazy system because as I'm signing in, it will ask for your name and all the information on the cat, and then it will say, do you have another cat? You hit yes, puts all your information, forwards it, and then it will kick me out of the system, and another person will get my spot. So now I have a cat that I've trapped and had in a cage for two to three days, and now I'm having to keep it until the next trapping days or take it to the SPCA at four in the morning. I'm fortunate, I don't, I don't work, I'm retired. However, there are a lot of the folks back here that do work. And so we, we help each other out, you know, managing, you know, I can take that cat in for you if you can't take it in. But we, we really do need help. We, we need another vet. We need, we need help.
Thank you, ma'am. Next up is James McCarthy, followed by Stacy, no last name.
Good evening, mayor, council members. Based on what you've heard today, there is a very dedicated group working to deal with the needs of animals within Elk Grove, primarily feral cats. In the last several months, though, there appears to be a change in how the shelter deals with unhomed cats brought to the shelter. Services for injured animals are unavailable or deferred, even animals with open wounds. One vet cannot cover the needs of this community. The city needs some kind of a backup. If Dr. Mary needs time off or were to find a better position, veterinary services would be severely affected. If TNR services were available back at the first part of the year for just thirty cats, you wouldn't have a hundred and fifty cats in foster care. You wouldn't have the fifty-five cats in the shelter because they wouldn't have been born. So we're trying to highlight the need to address this issue before it becomes an explosive problem, because this growth in the population is exponential. It appears that there's been this shift at the shelter where they're relying more and more on the community to provide services to the shelter and not the other way around. It doesn't look as this change in policy has been totally communicated to the people that are out helping the animals, because they haven't been told to stop trapping, period. And they can do that. They don't want to do that because then they also realize that we're gonna have a much greater problem later on if we don't get cats neutered. Every four months for a litter.
Let's hear from James, please. Thank you.
Every four months for a litter. That's twelve cats, twelve to twenty cats in a year from one female cat. So we, we, we appreciate getting on the agenda finally for the August meeting. It's been very hard fought. I know that we've been pestering you for months here. We are just looking to find a solution that everybody can work with. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next up is Stacy, followed by Annette Bedsworth.
Hello, again. My speech has had a lot of scribbles since everybody's already repeated everything, but as you've known, we've come here since October of 2022. That's ten months. It took ten months for us to get on the agenda. However, your agenda is only to hire three animal care service officers. That's not a vet. That's still not gonna fix the problem. It's only gonna give shelter kennel cleaners some tax or something. We don't even know what it was. As Roland mentioned, it's not a vet. That's not gonna fix all the lack of surgeries that we need. So what are you guys gonna do for the overpopulation in loose dogs, cats, and abandoned dogs and cats by owners because they can't afford to fix them? There's no animal control officers responding. Nobody can afford all these surgeries at a vet. They need the low-cost shelter vet. So what are you guys gonna do to help that? Again, the pause like cat head I had planned. You guys need to hire a vet to fix it. It's the only solution. Elk Grove is set up to only serve Elk Grove jurisdiction animals. However, residents have to continuously use Sacramento resources to get animals cared for in or treated, many times out of the money of their own pockets and getting there at three thirty in the morning, as everyone's mentioned. Sacramento citizens do not have the space to sacrifice for Elk Grove animals, let alone their own. They can't come to Elk Grove to get their animals fixed, so why do we have to result in taking away surgeries from them for their own pets? Elk Grove Shelter needs to care for all the animals of Elk Grove jurisdiction. So let's do it. Let's be Elk Grove residents and caring for our animals. Make room on the budget to hire additional vet and more vet staff. We showed you statistics, facts, ways to cut back, solutions, how to raise funds to get a second vet to come help out the shelters. Still no feedback, no willingness to speak to us on the agenda. Again, the agenda's only to hire the three medical staff, not what we need. Why are you ignoring us and refusing to help citizens of Elk Grove with this issue? As I mentioned back in the first meeting, I've trapped approximately fifteen to twenty cats, a couple of them more than, a couple of them in your personal neighborhoods within the last two years. In fact, I am currently trapping again in one of them. I think what I'll do instead is begin releasing unfixed cats in these neighborhoods and let you figure out if there is a problem and if a second vet is needed at that time. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Annette Bedsworth, followed by Steve Lee.
Hi. Good evening. My name is Annette Bedsworth, and I'm actually the director for Bradshaw Sacramento County Animal Shelter. So. Hi, I'm just here to visit. Somebody told me the cats were a hot mess, and I can anticipate people were here to talk about it tonight. I can assure you, cats are a hot mess everywhere, up and down the state, and spay and neuter is the absolute hottest topic when it comes to directors up and down the state. It's out of control. Veterinarians are a national shortage. It's at a crisis situation. As you heard earlier, I created a meeting in two weeks, and I invited City of Elk Grove because I also invited City of Sacramento and Ken with Sacramento SPCA, because we're specifically getting together to talk about the cat situation, because it is bad here, everywhere. There's, that number of twenty thousand I saw earlier is probably way underestimating really what the true numbers are. But I think that we can, I have experience with a community cat program from the previous county that I worked at, and it was very successful. It's painful getting there, but it is very successful, and it does require spay and neuter. And I wish I could tell you that, yes, let's hire a veterinarian, and all your problems will be solved. No, it will not be solved. You need a community cat program. That's truly what you need, is a community cat program. And if you, by some means, say, yes, let's hire a veterinarian. I had a veterinarian vacancy open for nine months, and I pay a very high rate for veterinarians because they are very expensive to hire. Nine months, I finally hired her, and she's coming on board. She came on board last month, and she is going to be doing nothing but serving people experiencing homelessness pets and doing nothing but performing spay and neuter. And that will start in the fall. That announcement was just made yesterday. We also have another grant that's going before the Board of Supervisors, so don't say anything. It's gonna be approved, and it's gonna offer free spay and neuter for the highly populated areas that need it. So I'm very data-driven. So when you do hire a vet, you need to be very data-driven and know what those expectations are. And right now, spay and neuter is out of control, and nobody can afford it. I was, when the state called me and said, hey, you put this budget together, and you're estimating this is how much it's gonna cost a spay and neuter, you might wanna check. And I did. I called the local veterinarians, and do you know the average cost for a spay and neuter is eight hundred dollars? I was shocked, just as the way you were, and they're like, yeah, it's out of control. And not all your veterinarians in this community do spay and neuter. Most of your veterinarians are doctors, and they're treating ill animals, and spay and neuter is kind of a specialty item. So it's a struggle. It's a struggle for us as shelters, too, along with trappers. I mean, we're competing for those spots at SPCA, CSN, we're all competing for those spots, and it's cat season. Cats breed when it's hot. So it's, it's definitely a challenge for all of us. I don't know what the answers are moving forward, other than I think a community cat program is something we need in Sacramento County, but definitely it would work in City of Elk Grove with your population. It would work really nicely. And what that really looks like is you spay and neuter all the cats, and they go back out to the community.
Thank you, Annette. And if I can get you to connect with staff to share your information, if we can get that, to do some follow-up work with you. Next up is Steve Lee, followed by Emily Ottenreth, and Emily will be our final speaker.
I bet you never thought you'd like to see me up here. A few weeks ago, by the way, hi, everybody, madam mayor and council members. How are you guys doing today? A few weeks ago, Vice Mayor Spees stated on the record when speaking about a contested new development here in Elk Grove, that the city needs to require developers to reach out in good faith and engage existing homeowners and their concerns before submitting a building plan. This comment was ignored by the other council people here on the, on the dais. Vice, Vice Mayor Spees's request is valid. You elected leaders are elected to represent the existing citizens and their concerns. I asked you to reconsider this concept. You owe it to those who elected you. The most highly contested piece of real property in Elk Grove history, it's a seventeen-year saga that I've been involved with, that is now considered, now is called Elliot Springs. It originated from sanitation district surplus land through Syntex Homes to Silverado Homes, numerous lawsuits, and it's now owned by Elliot Homes. The surrounding homeowners of Quell Ranch Estates, Fallbrook, the Gresha people, the, the Waterman Road Homeowners Association, all banded together, along with this city, with, with this, not this city council, but the city council at the time, for assistance to assure any big building on this two hundred and thirty acres of prime land would be built with a few existing homeowners' interests protected. Their concerns were brought to before this, your predecessors, and their concerns were weaved into the conditions of approval. Items like a mortar wall separating the communities, single stories only backing onto existing homes, matching of property lines whenever possible, extended building setbacks. These are just a few of the items that were incorporated into conditions. Elliot Homes leadership of their, Price Walker, Marty Eckert, Ed Reagan agreed to abide by these conditions when they purchased the property. They also promised to leave our backyards in better, better than they found them when they built this mortar wall. I was skeptical, but I'm here to laud Elliot Homes and the promises made by Price Walker. He left all the affected homes' backyards better than he found them, some at substantial cost to Elliot Homes. Also, thanks to Sarah Geier, the property manager for Dry Creek Landscape, who did the work. We can all work to make Elk Grove better, and we should. Consider an ordinance that requires, that requires developers to engage homeowners and have the city mediate that everyone's best interests are heard and considered in good faith before project approval. It's not hard to do. It's been done before. It should be done. You owe it to your people that live here, that vote for you, that are your neighbors. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Our final speaker is Emily Ottenreth.
Madam mayor and the council, I rushed over as soon as I heard what was happening tonight because our safety is very important. It is not safe for me to be here right now. My face ends up on national social media platforms with my business's phone number on it when I speak out for queer people, but I'm here because this is that important. This is not a school board meeting. It is not your job to intervene in the school district, and nobody should be coming here to tell you to do that. But I am here to say that queer people are not safe enough in Elk Grove, a city that is no place for hate, a city that is welcome to all. We are at risk. Our safety is at risk. The policies that are being advocated for by people who are opposed to our rights kill students. They increase rates of suicide. They increase rates of bullying and violence, and we cannot stand for that in our city. We need a council that will speak out all year. I loved what you all said in Pride Month. I loved how you stood for that Pride proclamation and how you raised the Pride flag, and we need you to carry that forward throughout the year so that our students and our families are safe. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ottenreth. And that concludes our public comment. We will now move on to our city manager's report.
Evening again, madam mayor, members of the city council, Jason Berman, city manager. A few items to report on this evening. First, there was a comment earlier about the illegal fireworks, and the city is very aware of the issues, and it's not just in Elk Grove issue. Obviously, it's something that's happened regionally. As you know, the city formed a task force this year in partnership with the CSD, our police department, our coenforcement officers, in order to try to combat the best we could illegal fireworks. The goal of the task force was to identify the locations and the individuals using illegal fireworks, contact illegal, collect illegal fireworks, and issue citations where possible. The result of these efforts included the issuance of seventeen administrative citations for a total of sixty-three hundred dollars in fines and confiscation of two hundred and thirteen pounds of illegal fireworks. Just FYI, the city received a total of six hundred and one reports of illegal fireworks on July fourth, which is a reduction from prior years, but it's still a very high number. The Cassuna CSD and the city will host a grand opening celebration for Oasis Park Recreation Center tomorrow, Thursday, July twenty-seventh, from five to eight p.m., with the park located at eight oh one five Poppy Ridge Road, Oasis Park. A ribbon-cutting ceremony will be held at six p.m. Free activities, entertainment, refreshments will be provided for the communities, for the community. The Strauss Festival is back, returns this week. The outdoor musical production is sponsored by the city and other local organizations and presented by community organizers. Each performance features a live orchestra and a storyline brought to life by local dancers. Nightly festivities start at Elk Grove Park at seven thirty p.m. and will run tomorrow through Sunday, July twenty-seventh through the thirty-first. Admission is free. Parking is ten dollars. Learn more at straussfestival.com. Elk Grove Police Department will continue their barbecue in the beat event series this Saturday, July twenty-ninth, at Meawak Park, nine three four four Village Tree Drive, from eleven to two o'clock. Meet local officers, check out some special vehicles and equipment, enjoy games, and a free barbecue lunch. You may notice there's new street banners colored for mural and new advertising featuring the new Main Street marketing campaign begin showing up around Old Town. This campaign is a partnership between the city and they'll explore Elk Grove to promote visitation in the historic area. Public Affairs played a role in this campaign through various, through event planning and programming at the Old Town Plaza. As part of that, they partnered with Gloria and Friends to offer a free Zumba class at the Old Town Plaza this Sunday, July thirtieth, beginning at ten a.m. the Old Town Plaza this Sunday, July 30th, beginning at 10:00 a.m. Also debuting next week is Country on the Plaza on Friday, August 4th, from 7:00 to 9:00 p.m., featuring free line dancing lessons and music from the band Gunpowder and Lace. Lastly, the Creative Space Market will take place monthly on the first Sunday of each month. Join us for the Aloha Sunday Market on August 6th and 10th at 3:00 p.m. A lot of things happen in our historic district. Also, National Night Out is coming up next Tuesday, August 1st. Members of the Elk Grove Police Department are working with neighborhood organizers to compile a list of celebrations being held throughout the city. Officers and other city officials will visit these parties to connect with residents and promote ways to keep our city safe. And finally, if you're looking for a new way of getting news from the city, the city has introduced Elk Grove City Cast, a podcast exploring hot topics, sharing local happenings and introducing some of the people making a difference in our community. Tune in on the city's website, Spotify, Google Podcasts, or a growing network of podcast places. New episodes will be added monthly. Tune in this month to hear an interview with Sarah Bontrake, our own Housing and Public Services Manager, on how the city is serving Elk Grove's unhoused population, putting new Measure E funding to work to help address homelessness and gaining recognition as one of the top 100 places to live in America. And that concludes my report. I'm happy to answer any questions that the council might have.
All right. Excellent report. Any questions for our city manager? Yes.
Thank you, Mayor. Is there going to be a report out on an agenda, council agenda item, on the task force for the Fourth of July?
I just did it.
Okay, but I'm in, okay, more.
More, is there more information that you would like?
A more detailed thing. I mean, specifically, I think we need to take a look at our punishment, you know, the fines. It's obviously not a deterrent, so I think we should take a look at how we're issuing fines and the amounts. You consider the thousands of dollars that actually people invest in buying illegal fireworks, a few hundred dollars is not, not.
Not a deterrent.
It's not a deterrent at all. So I think it's worth bringing back to take a look at that, if my colleagues will support that.
The fines are just from the city, because when I was doing the ride-along with the CSD, I heard even a fine up to $5,000. So I don't know, is this the city or is it with, from the CSD?
I saw you're welcome.
Because I mean, I don't know.
So you're saying it's 5,000? You're saying it's a couple hundred?
I mean, I've heard it's from 5,000, but I'm not sure if that's from the CSD or is that from?
Ours is not. Yeah.
Well, our assistant chief kind of addressed, I know the city fines are in the hundreds of dollars. It depends on the number of fireworks. So it's each violation. So if you have a bucket full of 500 fireworks, there can be a separate violation for each one, which can add up into the thousands of dollars. So it just, it depends. And I'm not aware of the CSD having a separate list of fines. I believe all the fines are coming from us through code enforcement, through that task force. But if the council wants to revisit the fine amounts, we can certainly bring that back.
Well, I would be interested to see if have you come back with something, rather than, you know, examine the situation. You have the data from Fourth of July leading up to it. I've received numerous emails on both sides. Both sides being there's concern that the city will ban fireworks altogether, to we're not doing enough for illegal fireworks, can we ban them? Well, they're illegal fireworks, they are banned.
Exactly.
By their nature of being illegal.
Exactly, right.
But to the extent that it can, you know, as a deterrent, but I would, I think coming from PD is the experts and working with CSD of, you know, leaving it to you all to come up with something and maybe bringing it back. I don't know that, you know, I don't know if that's what you envision.
Well.
Rather than us talking about it, I'd like to see the data.
So we went through this conversation before, I forget.
Yeah, a couple of years ago.
And then before that.
Yeah.
We went through even before that. And so we came up with the concept of the fine. I think, well, I'll just speak for myself, at that time, we thought that this progressive type of penalty would be sufficient, but later, you know, we're learning the actual amounts of money people are spending on these things and recognizing that while it could end up to be thousands of dollars, it doesn't look like that's what's happening. So I, that's why I'm asking if you want to bring it back for a conversation. Certainly open to any, any type of suggestions our PD has, but just going off of previous conversations, the fine seems to be one of the main tools and it doesn't, it doesn't seem to be working. So I'm just, that's the only place I'm looking at, if there's other suggestions. So my point being.
Chief Solomon, you have any?
Bring it back, yeah, let's bring it back to talk about it.
Well, we certainly would be willing to bring that back. The actual citations are issued by code enforcement, so it would be more and more of a joint effort, I would think, with code enforcement.
I mean, I'm open to reexamining it, certainly because I've done the ride-along on Fourth of July with our fire chief and the amount of fires, threat, you know, what that can cause for threat to human life and property damage, it's quite substantial and it seems like it gets worse every year.
And if I could add in as well, when we bring that, the resources that PD and code enforcement have in that Fourth of July 24-hour period are extremely finite when you, when you consider all of the things that we ask the police department to do that night. Is there a way that you can help? I mean, I know it because I've heard it, we've talked about it, but I think that's something that needs to be discussed with folks, that when you're, when you're dealing with a run in the morning and you're dealing with a fireworks event in the evening and you are, and you still have to do traffic and DUI and all those other things, that pool or that, the pool of resources becomes extremely finite. And when they say, well, why aren't you stopping all these folks? Who's going to do it, right? Can we also talk about how, what that looks like on a typical evening? That would be helpful. And the second part that I would ask about, and it might be a bit out of scope, but the state does fairly well in regulating other types of explosives, and I'll leave it right there on that, they track what's coming from out of state. I want to know, or I would like to know, excuse me, I'm not trying to place a demand, but I would like to know what the city or what the state is doing to stop the trafficking of the illegal fireworks into the state. They do pretty well with other items. So, I mean, we can, we can call them illegal, guess what, they're illegal. Doesn't seem to stop them right now. Are we going to call them illegal illegal? So if you could, help us understand what the state is doing and maybe there's opportunities for the state to, to help out on this issue.
I could probably jump in on this one, Vice Mayor, because I know PD and CSD fireworks together every year to try and mitigate this activity that starts from June 27th to July 5th. June 27th to July 5th. And PD and FD normally does a report and shares the data with both us and the CSD Board every year. Usually happens at the end of the month of July, normally happens as late as the early part of August. If we had the fire department and PD do a joint report to the council and to the public, if that could share that data, that could give us some indication, but also the state, they should have these numbers, they should have the data that, that helps fuse in with the local information, but we also know it's wildfire season. So CAL FIRE is going to be stretched out all over the state fighting fires like they're doing right now. But it definitely helps if, because they have, they have a lot of different divisions, they could probably work to supply us with some of that data to help give us some guidance on how to proceed, because the fine structure up to several thousand dollars based on multiple offenses is not working. The activity is getting more and more violent every year. So we need to do what we can to try and get ahead of it, because as this activity continues, whether people are going to State Line Nevada, Reno, Henderson, Nevada, Amazon, they're getting them. And when they're getting them, they're selling them to other people. And that's why we're seeing this metastasized growth of aerial fireworks that is causing more and more damage and running later and later into the evening. Because this year, fireworks were running in the southeastern part of Elk Grove up to 2:00 in the morning. Last year, yeah, last year, it was 1:00, 1:00 a.m. When we were coming out of COVID and people were shooting off fireworks in 2021, it was up until 4:00 in the morning. They were going as crazy and as intense. And we're starting to see more of it here in Elk Grove. We've seen it in Sacramento. And for folks that have PTSD, for people who have pets that are not used to this activity, this is, this has become, this has become a bridge too far, and I know our resources are stretched because we're doing other activity, but we need to do something to help deter this from going any further. And it may take, what, two, three years, but at least we're making the effort, because we can find people, we can use drones, code enforcement can go and ticket people the next day like they've been doing these last few years and doing a really good job of it, with the partnership of CSD Fire and the police doing it together, but we need to look at something, because this is getting outrageous. It's getting outrageous. And, and we could ban fireworks and not do the fireworks show at Elk Grove Park, but for folks that pride themselves on seeing the show at a sanctioned event, that should, they should not be punished from that because someone else is out there doing it just because they can on their private land or in front of their house and doing it at the risk of everyone in their, in everyone else's neighborhoods. Because I'll tell you what, if someone shoots one of them fireworks and put it on someone else's rooftops in our neighborhood, someone's going to get sued and get sued heavily, because this is just crazy. It's, it's crazy.
So what I'm hearing is there is an interest to bring it back.
Yes.
And look at various ways to address it, including expanding the fines. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions for our city manager? Seeing none, we'll move on to our next item, which is our consent calendar items. At this time, I'll go ahead and open up the public comment for consent items. I don't see anyone sign up for anything on consent. I'll close the public comment opportunity and look for a motion to approve the consent calendar.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All right.
All right. Good evening, Mayor Singh Allen and members of the city council. I am Kara Taylor Seaman, this finance manager here in the city. I am here this evening to present the Republic Services Annual Delinquent Utility Report. So a little bit of background, beginning on July 1st, 2017, the city contracted with Republic Services to provide solid waste and storm drain utility services and billing. The accounts that are listed on the proposed tax levy represent those that are delinquent with Republic Services for charges that were incurred prior to May 1st of this year and which have been unpaid for at least 120 days. Each year, Republic Services uses the county tax roll to recover those costs and the city's role is to provide assistance in that effort. On June 21st, Republic Services notified approximately 2,800 account holders of their delinquencies and tonight's public hearing. Those accounts totaled just over $1.5 million. The detail for the solid waste and storm drain components are shown on your screen. For solid waste, there were 2,655 accounts representing just under $1.2 million. And for storm drain, there were 2,679 accounts totaling about $325,000. Following the notification and the letters that were sent out, 917 accounts have been brought current and that represents about $215,000. So currently, solid waste, there are 1,774 accounts, about $1 million, and for storm drain, it's 1,794 accounts, about $300,000. And in closing, customers had until July 20th to bring their accounts current. Those who did were removed from the delinquency rolls and will not be submitted to the county for collections. Everybody else will be included on the Sacramento County tax roll for fiscal year 2023 through 2024. And finally, Republic Services has two representatives. Anna and Kiran are in the lobby here. They are available to meet and speak directly with customers who have, who have questions or concerns, whatever. So staff's recommendation is to conduct the public hearing, adopt the resolution to approve and confirm the report, and then request that delinquent charges be placed on the Sacramento County tax roll for the upcoming fiscal year. This concludes my presentation and I am available for questions.
All right. Thank you for your presentation.
Of course.
At this time, I will go ahead and declare the public hearing is now open and open up the public comment opportunity. Nobody has signed up to speak. I will close the public comment opportunity and declare the public hearing is closed. Any questions or comments? If not, I will look for a motion.
Move to adopt the resolution.
Second.
We have a motion, a second. To all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All right, thank you.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the city council. Joseph Dagum, an associate planner with Development Services. The item before you this evening is the Elk Grove Neighborhood Loop, Neighborhood Market Public Convenience or Necessity. The project consists of a determination of public convenience or necessity, also known as a PCN, to allow the Loop Neighborhood Market to obtain a Type 20 alcohol license from the California Department of Alcohol Beverage Control. A Type 20 license allows for the sale of beer and wine for off-site consumption. The project site is located at 8607 Elk Grove Boulevard on the northeast intersection, I'm sorry, northwest intersection of Elk Grove Boulevard and Emerald Vista Drive. It is the Shell fueling station with Loop Neighborhood Market Convenience Store with an attached car wash. On the opposite intersection, the southeast intersection of Elk Grove Boulevard and East Stockton Boulevard is a Chevron fueling station and extra mile convenience store that currently has a Type 21 license that allows for beer, wine and distilled spirits. This is the floor plan that was provided by the applicant for this PCN application. Beer and wine will be sold in the 153 square foot area out of the store, which is approximately 3.5% of the total floor area of the store. Sales will be from 6:00 a.m. to midnight, and as I mentioned, this is a Type 20 ABC license, so distilled spirits are, will not be allowed under this license request. ABC requires an applicant to obtain a PCN when the establishment is located within a high crime area, which is crime reporting district that has reported crimes that are 20% or greater than average number of crimes reported for other subsectors within the city and/or when the census tract is deemed over-concentrated by ABC standards. So Elk Grove, as you see on your screen, the bottom left image, separated into 26 subsectors for crime, crime reporting purposes. The Elk Grove Police Department compiles the crime statistics in seven areas. This project site is located in Subsector 5101, which reported 182 crimes in 2022. The average number of crimes reported per subsector is 116. So this subsector is considered in a high crime area. Additionally, census tract 93.08, any more than three licenses is considered over-concentrated. There are currently five active licenses. This request for the Loop Neighborhood Market would be number six. So the city council determines whether the public convenience or necessity will be served by the issuance of an alcohol license for the applicant's premises, based on the following factors. Number one, the proximity of the number of other retail outlets selling alcohol. Number two, the proximity of the retail outlets to schools, playgrounds and other facilities serving young people. The, number three, the proximity of retail outlets to residential neighborhoods. And number four, whether the retail outlet provides a wide range of desirable goods and services and/or a unique type of goods or service. So this map shows the, the subject property, which is here, in relation to other, other land uses that I've mentioned in the previous, the previous slide. There is one, there is one ABC license that is currently in the same shopping center, that is the CVS. As I mentioned previously, the Chevron gas station with extra mile convenience store serving a Type 21 license is adjacent. The nearest residential neighborhood is the Emerald Vista Apartments. And then in terms of the school and park, the Baker Park and the Joseph Kerr Middle School are greater than 2,000 feet away. School are greater than two thousand feet away. The Police Department has reviewed the project and determined that there is no public safety reason to oppose the finding of public convenience or necessity or associated ABC license application. The applicant has committed to implement ongoing staff service training for security, safety, and sales of age-restricted products. And then the digital surveillance, the applicant will maintain digital surveillance recordings, footage for at least thirty days in the store's interior and exterior and will be shared by law, shared to law enforcement by request. So the project is exempt from CEQA pursuant to the common sense exemption. Granting this PCN will expand the products available for sale at the existing convenience store, but will not bring any physical chance to the environment. So staff is recommending approval of the public convenience or necessity. This concludes my presentation. Staff and the applicant are available to answer any questions. Thank you.
All right. Excellent. Thank you for your presentation. At this time, I will declare that the public hearing is now open. Would the applicant like to speak? I see someone coming up. Hello.
Hi. Good evening. My name is Steve Rawlings. Very nice to meet all of you. I am here on behalf of AU Energy, which owns the Loop Neighborhood Market. They happen to own a hundred and eighteen stations, convenience stores throughout the state of California. They currently employ about twelve or thirteen-hundred people company-wide. I bring this up to emphasize to you that this is a fairly large organization that has many stores that do sell alcohol and that they have a lot of procedures and policies in place that have really made them not a public safety issue in any of the other communities that they serve. For the record, we do agree with your staff recommendation this evening, and I'm available for any questions that anybody may have.
All right. Thank you for coming. At this time, I'll go ahead and open up the public comment opportunity. I don't see anyone signed up to speak. I'll close the public comment opportunity and declare the public hearing is closed. Any questions or comments? I'll start to the left.
I don't have any questions, but I'm willing to make the motion.
Okay. Any questions on, to my right? All right. We'll look for a motion then.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. All right. Next item, please.
Good evening.
Good evening.
City of Elk Grove, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and City Council Members. My name is Eric Dahl and I'm the Project Manager for Inner West Consulting Group, supporting the capital improvement program. Tonight, I have the pleasure of presenting the public hearing to consider a resolution adopting the mitigated negative declaration and mitigation monitoring and reporting program for the Laguna Creek and White House Creek multifunctional corridor project and approving the project. The California Environmental Quality Act, or CEQA, requires an analysis of agency approvals of discretionary projects such as this, which have potential for resulting in either a direct physical change in the environment or a reasonably foreseeable indirect physical change in the environment. Thirty-day circulation of the ISMND is a CEQA requirement to adopt the environmental document. While not a CEQA requirement, the city has extended invitation for public hearing to adopt the MND and MMRP. A little project background. This project is part of the Laguna Creek and interregional trail system. The project study area is outlined in red, as you can see, located east of State Route ninety-nine between Sheldon and Bond Road. Zooming in a little further, the proposed project runs along the Laguna Creek and White House Creeks between East Stockton Boulevard and Camden Park Development. The trail alignment, which is shown in green, will be optimized to best preserve as many environmentally sensitive areas as possible. It also includes the construction of three bridges crossing the creeks and two floodway excavation areas to maintain high water surface elevation as shown. Taking a look at the typical sections, the maintenance access road consists of a ten-foot wide paved travel way surface with two-foot wide decomposed granite shoulders on either side of the pavement bounded by posts and cable fencing. Bridges, shown on the right, are expected to be prefabricated weathered steel trusses. Moving on to the public outreach, this project has been in the making for over six years. Starting shortly after the completion of the project feasibility study in May of two thousand seventeen, this is a huge milestone that we've reached tonight. Public outreach on this project has been ongoing since the start of preliminary engineering in January of two thousand eighteen, and public meetings and individual party meetings have been held on a number of occasions, and project correspondence and communications are still ongoing with project development. The proposed project improvements have been analyzed, and it's been determined by the city that a mitigated negative declaration was appropriate as all identified potential impacts are mitigated to a less than significant level. A list of potential impacts shown are air quality, biological resources, cultural resources, geology and soils, hazards and hazardous materials, hydrology, water quality, noise, and tribal cultural resources. Prior to approval of the project, city council must adopt the mitigated negative declaration and associated mitigation monitoring and reporting program. There are project mitigation measures required during construction, including performing biological pre-construction surveys, installing environmentally sensitive areas ESA fencing, installation of protective silt fencing around vernal pools, implementation of a worker environmental awareness program, purchase of compensatory migration credits due to impacts to waters of the United States and waters of the state. The initial study with mitigated negative declaration was circulated to the public review between November fourth and December ninth, two thousand twenty-two. Comments were received by five parties: Creekside Christian Church, Tessa and Raymond Cruck, or Elk Grove citizens, Central Valley Regional Water Quality Control Board, the Sacramento Metropolitan Air Quality Management District, and the Sacramento Municipal Utility District. None of the comments received resulted in any significant changes to the MND or the MMRP. However, additional information was added to the final MND for clarification resulting from some of the comments received. The responses to comments have been included in Appendix E of the ISMND. The preliminary engineering phase is complete with the adoption of the environmental document. The next step is to begin final design, environmental permitting, and right-of-way acquisition. And we're targeting beginning of construction in summer of two thousand twenty-five. Staff recommends the adoption of the mitigated negative declaration, adoption of the mitigation monitoring and reporting program, and approval of the project. This concludes my presentation tonight. Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you. At this time, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have.
All right. Thank you for your presentation. At this time, I will declare that the public hearing is now open and open up the public comment opportunity. Nobody has signed up to speak. I'll close the public comment opportunity and declare the public hearing is now closed. Any questions or comments? If not, I look for a motion.
Comment, quick comment, Mayor?
Yes, please.
Thank you. I'm just really excited to see this continue to progress. We're continuing to connect our east and west sides, so.
One Elk Grove.
That's right. One Elk Grove. So I'm, I'm really excited. So great job to all the staff, and I know the permitting process is very cumbersome. So thanks. Good, great job in getting this done and to this point. Can't wait to be in construction. With that, I would be honored to make the motion to adopt the resolution.
Second.
All right.
I also just want to say you guys keep on looking alive, all right? We're almost to your guys' item. I know it kind of felt like a class, so keep on looking alive, all right?
All right. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. All right. Next item, please.
It's, it's good training for them, Sergio. Just letting you know. It's good training for them to wait and go through it all, you know.
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Okay. Good evening, Madam Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor, and members of the city council. My name is Tish Mann. I am your new economic development specialist, and tonight I will be speaking with you about the facade improvement program. And so the recommendation on the item before you is to consider a resolution establishing a revised facade improvement program. And to kind of frame this presentation, I want to revisit some of city council goals and priorities, which are to ensure a vibrant community and sustainable economy with diverse businesses and amenities, and to ensure public and private development that is high-quality and attractive, contributing to a sense of place. And so there are many cities in Cal, or there are many facade improvement programs in Californian cities and elsewhere. And the goal of a facade improvement program is to improve the exterior of older commercial buildings, and in doing so, you improve the appearance of business districts and create a sense of place. So a building facade, right, is that storefront or the exterior of a commercial building that faces the public right of way. So it's what you see when you drive through town and you look out the window and you see a storefront and people are coming in and out of the door, and you see signage. So it's basically that exterior wall that faces the sidewalk or the street. And so this program would essentially provide more grant funding to building owners and business owners who want to spruce up their facades. So they might want to add new signage or lighting and awnings and paint. And so to kind of provide an example, this is what a facade improvement program could do for cities. You'll see in the before pictures, the buildings are sort of older, they're dilapidated, and then the after photos, there's new paint, there's new windows and doors, new signage, new awnings, and non-permanent landscaping containers and outdoor seating. And so this is what the program could, you know, do to the buildings here in Elk Grove. And we actually do have a facade improvement program in place right now. It's called the Old Town Facade Grant Program, and it was established in two thousand fifteen. And it was designed to provide financial assistance to building owners and business owners in historic downtown in the grant amounts that did not exceed seven-five-hundred dollars. But the program underperforms. In the eight years that it's been around, only three applicants have applied to this program. That was Brickhouse Restaurant. They were deemed ineligible because they had already started work on their facade and then kind of retroactively applied to the grant, so that wasn't really the intention of the program. Old Mercantile Building got three thousand dollars, and then School of Rock got four thousand dollars, four thousand four hundred dollars. And it's believed that this program is underutilized because the amount of funding offered is too low and that, and also the fact that it was not citywide. So if you think about it, it takes significant effort and capital investment to do a facade improvement. So if you don't have the financial resources, you don't have the financial support, then you're just not going to be able to do it, even if you want to. And then it's not citywide, so the applicant pool size is really small and limited because this is only open to people in downtown, historic downtown. And so for a lot of those reasons, this program kind of got put on the back burner. And then with Measure E resources coming in and our team expanding, we started to kind of bring it back to the forefront. And so we started doing research into other facade improvement programs in other cities. So for example, I've had extensive conversations with San Diego. They have like an entire analyst dedicated to just managing their facade improvements. And then Hayward has an award-winning program, so they were really, you know, helpful when we were doing our research. And so based on the best practices that we observed and also in analyzing our program's weaknesses, we've come up with a few proposed changes to this program. So first, we'd like to open it up to be citywide. We just want, you know, this to not be limited to people in historic downtown. We want it to be more fair and we want to see more applicants in general. And then we also want to offer a larger grant amount, and that we're proposing a matching grant of up to fifty thousand dollars or fifty percent of eligible, eligible project costs, whichever is less. So meaning like if a project costs forty thousand dollars, then we'll reimburse twenty thousand dollars, half of that. If the project costs two hundred thousand dollars, then we'll reimburse fifty thousand dollars. We would never exceed that maximum. And then the grants are going to be awarded in the form of a reimbursement after the project is complete. And then there's also going to be this design and project management services element where we'll actually have a bench of on-call architects who are going to be matched up with applicants. And then the applicant can work with the architect when it's time to like do the drawings and also manage the project. And then we also want to market this program better. So we especially want to market it to building owners. If we could just work with like one applicant and the applicant has a building with like four tenant spaces or eight tenant spaces, that's just getting more, more out of it, making a bigger impact. And in terms of eligibility, individual storefronts and entire commercial buildings are eligible, eligible. Occupied and vacant buildings are eligible too, but buildings that are occupied or owned by government or national chain corporations and franchises are not eligible. And then new large format shopping centers are also not eligible. And that's because some of these, you know, larger corporate entities tend to have resources. And so if they really wanted to do a facade improvement, they could probably afford to. We're trying to work with smaller businesses, with building owners who have, you know, older commercial buildings who have always wanted to do facade improvement, but they just never, you know, had the means to. So those are the people that we want to work with. And the eligible project expenses and costs include repair, replacement, and new installations of awnings, canopies, windows, doors, lighting, marquees, signs, paint, exterior cladding like brick siding, stucco tile, and non-permanent landscaping containers and outdoor seating or gathering areas. The grant would also cover government approval and permit fees as well as that design and project management services component that I mentioned. And so the process is going to start with initial discussions with a potential applicant. We want to hear like what they want to do with their building, and if we like the idea and if they're interested in the program, then we have a pre-application meeting where we review the program guidelines and get them to understand like the processes of the program and what they need to do to be successful. And, you know, we'll determine if they're going to be a good partner from that meeting, and then we will invite them to apply. And then if that application is accepted, then we'll engage the on-call architect, who then produces the concept drawings and also gets that cost estimate for the project. And then if we're within budget and if the applicant wants to move forward and the city wants to move forward, then we enter into an economic incentive agreement that really defines like the scope of the project, the timeline of the project, and also the repayment terms. And then from there on, the applicant is in charge of overseeing the work, and they will also work with the city's architect and project manager to make sure the project is completed on time and on budget. And then when the project is done, the applicant submits a payment request to the city, and they'll show proof that they spent money on like the eligible project costs and expenses. And then within thirty days, we'll reimburse them the agreed-upon amount. So here are some example buildings that you might recognize throughout town that would be very good candidates for a program like this. And so, you know, we very, very well may reach out to these buildings if this program gets adopted. And the funding for this program would come from Measure E. One hundred thousand dollars are included in the FY twenty-three twenty-four budget and additional funding for future program years that be subject to city council approval. And so again, the recommendation tonight is to adopt a resolution rescinding the current facade improvement program and replacing it with a new facade improvement program, adopting new program policies, guidelines, and procedures. And the alternative action is that city council could elect not to rescind the current program and leave it in place, but we do not recommend this action because the new program would better further council goals concerning vibrancy and a sense of place. And with that, I'm happy to take any questions.
All right. Thank you. Excellent report. At this time, I will go ahead and open up the public comment opportunity. I do not see anyone signed up to speak, so I will go ahead and close the public comment opportunity and start with my left if you have any questions or comments for staff.
Only, first of all, I wanted to welcome you to your new position and congratulate you on job well done on your first presentation here. And then for the questions about, we talked about not having enough funds. And then, for the questions about, we talked about not having enough funds, but I see you allocating $100,000. Is it, were you just anticipating no more than two maybe applications will come forward this fiscal year?
Yeah, so that's a really good question. So, it's kind of the first time we've done it in eight years, so we don't really know what it's going to be like. Like, is it going to be two really big projects? Is it going to be a big project and a handful of small projects, or is it going to be all small projects, right? We don't really know. I think we just came up with that number because we needed to start somewhere. And also, like, we do expect an individual storefront. Most of those projects would be about like $30,000 to $40,000. But if like a building owner who has four tenant spaces or eight tenant spaces, you know, you do the math, and it adds up really quickly. So, we want to just have that flexibility to help with the bigger projects. But we kind of are expecting kind of smaller amounts than the, you know, the complete $50,000 that's going to be offered.
Got it.
Yeah.
Okay. No, thank you very much. Yeah, I'm, I fully support it. I think this is a great incentive for, for taking care of our city and improving things, so.
Thank you. Vice Mayor?
Yes, so I just, when I'm out talking to folks, I want to make sure I understand the math. In order to get the $50,000, they have to put in $100,000. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. All right, great. And then, the other thing was, I noticed, this is the first time I've seen the funded by Measure E down in the, and I really like that. I think that's, I think that's something important, like, you know, you see, you know, your Measure A funds or whatever it was are contributing to this road. I think, I think that's good. I appreciate that. I think we should have that. And maybe it should be, you know, Measure E in action or something like that, but I like it just the way it is, too. So, thank you.
Councilmember Brewer?
Thank you, Ms. Mann, for the presentation. I thought the information was very helpful. But I had a question, and hopefully you or someone from your team can help me on this. The Old Town Facade Grant Program, has that been inactive over the past eight years for lack of funding, or just no one stepped forward to have a desire to have their facility retrofitted?
So, it's a mix of kind of a bunch of different things. So, first, it wasn't really budgeted for across the years, but it's technically still in place. So, there's that. And then, it's not really marketed, and I think that's kind of because the program itself isn't super strong. It's like $7,500 isn't enough to make a dent in someone's budget, you know, for a facade improvement. And the limited demand, too, is just like confined to so few people. So, for a lot of reasons, it just got, it kind of got put on the back burner. And so, yeah, that's why it's kind of taken a while to like, for this to revive and come back to life. But again, with Measure E funding and our team's expanding, we have the, not only the resources with Measure E, but we have the bandwidth now, too. So, we're really thrilled to kind of put this on a priority list again.
And with, and with the actual buildings themselves, because you mentioned how Brick House was deemed ineligible, but for other projects throughout town, based on the theme or the aesthetics of the buildings in the, in the mall, in the mall shopping centers versus what we have on Elk Grove Boulevard, is there a certain theme that we desire for businesses to aspire to, and that's the reason why some of this program, as we're going to reface it, constitutes?
Yeah, it's a really good question. I mean, we definitely, I mean, the theme is to just placemaking, right? We want this to be beautify the business, business districts and beautify neighborhoods. And I think in terms of, yeah, mashing it to like a community theme, I don't think we have had that discussion just yet, but I think that will really come up when we do those initial discussions and the pre-application meetings and things like that. And that'll certainly be one of the criterias that we use when we decide to invite them or not, is to apply to the program, so.
No, this, this is helpful because, because we're trying, we're trying to develop a new feel, a new, a new way of people thinking about their communities and businesses having the pride that they have in, in, in opening up shop here in town and wanting to invest in the town continuously, and wanting to have other business partners or allies come to Elk Grove. It's very important to have something like this in place, but I definitely see the merits of whether it be in Old Town slash Historic District, or in some of our other parts of town where you do have shopping centers, small shopping centers, mediums-like shopping centers, that, that they have a certain look or feel, or that would reflect the neighborhood or community that they serve. So, it makes perfect sense. When the times comes, I wouldn't mind making the motion to adopt the resolution, or at least rescind the, the original resolution and establish the new one.
Councilmember Robles?
I think this is a great idea and a great thing that we're going to be doing for our restaurants and our, it's much needed. So, I think this is exciting. I think folks are going to be excited about this. I hope that several people apply so that we can see that there is that interaction. And this is a great partnership for our city, so I'm in full support of this. So, thank you for the presentation. Double major and a double masters, is that correct that I heard? Okay, we, yeah, so thank you for that.
Hi, Achiever there. Well, excellent presentation. Welcome to our city. You did a phenomenal job. Along with the comments from my colleagues, I think this will not only, you know, it provides additional incentives. There's a big reason why I probably wasn't using, there just wasn't enough. And so, it left the burden on the owner to either, if they had the funds, to move forward or leave it as is. So, hopefully, this is enticing to beautify, it goes to beautifying Elk Grove with improved facades. So, I, too, am very much in support. So, with that, I don't think I, I might have heard a motion from Councilmember Brewer. Okay, so there's a motion?
Second.
And a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you so much. All right, students, brace yourselves. All right, so next item, sir.
And that is item 9.2, which is to consider appointment of four voting members to the Youth Commission. Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Councilmembers, I am Jason Lindgren, your City Clerk. For this item, we have four vacancies on the Youth Commission. You have 21 applications, so now begins the tough process. You have a numerous speakers in the audience who wish to address their applications. I would note that applicant Raj Singh sent in comments. He was not able to make it this evening, but he did submit a comment for council consideration for his application that he received. I'll give the floor over to the applicants, though.
All right, very good. All right, at this time, I'll go ahead and open up the public comment opportunity, and we will start with Adiel Nelson, followed by Rafael Bassas.
Good evening, Mayor and members of the City Council. My name is Adiel Nelson, and I'm reaching out to express my interest and readiness to serve as a representative on the Elk Grove Youth Commission. It is my belief that Elk Grove High School, the school that I attend, isn't currently represented on the commission. I would love to have the opportunity to represent my school and my community. I have lived in Elk Grove my entire life and would love to represent East Elk Grove. I'm familiar with the schools and the area, as well as the local sports programs and nonprofit organizations. I have volunteered and fostered with Elk Grove Animal Shelter, and have assisted the Elk Grove Food Bank with volunteering and participating in their runs. I love attending community events like the Strauss Festival, moving the park with my Neighborhood Association, and other teen events. I have been involved with my synagogue and was the Communications Vice President for my youth group. I've created posters and collaborated with other teens to plan events. I have also been involved with Elk Grove High School's TDA, Technical Digital Arts Academy, and currently am a president on the board. I love creating digital art and helping to plan dances and events for students. In working with others, I have learned the importance of listening and understanding different viewpoints and making decisions that are in the best interest of the community as a whole. I would like to continue to have space for dialogue, engagement, and actions among the youth in our community, as well as fun events where everyone feels welcome and comfortable. I enjoy meeting new people and hearing diverse perspectives. I'm responsible, respectful, and have empathy for others. My love for Elk Grove is a driving force in applying. I want to see our community grow in a way that reflects the dreams and aspirations of its young residents. I believe the Elk Grove Youth Commission plays a role in shaping and creating that future. I want to ensure that our youth have a voice, and their voices are not just heard, but listened to. If given the honor to serve on the Youth Commission, I pledge to bring the spirit of active listening, engagement, and responsibility. I promise to represent my school and my community to the best of my ability, and I am committed to making sure that the decisions reflect the rich diversity, potential, and great aspirations of our youth. I am here to offer my time, energy, skills, and passion for service. I'm here to give back to my community that's given me so much. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Next up is Rafael Bassas, and then Manjot Rai.
All right. Hi, everyone. Good evening, Mayor and City Council. I'm Rafael Bassas, and I am a rising senior at Franklin High School. You might remember me from Civic Summer. Madam Mayor, I was the founder of Garcia Town, and you might also remember me as the one who wants to be the president of the United States. But, you know, I'm more than that, than just that. I'm more than just, you know, the founder of cities, you know, the future president. I'm a, I'm the intern at the General Manager's Office at Consumnis CSD, a job that I absolutely love. And it's actually my last day. I am just got off the bus from there, and I'm sad it's over, honestly. I'm Senior Class President at Franklin High School, making me a point of contact for so many people in our community. And most importantly, above all of that, I'm a friend to everyone I meet. Vice Mayor Spees, you brought up in your Civic Summer speech, the power of connection, right? The power of just saying hello. That's the sort of mindset that I bring into my everyday life. I speak to everyone as if they're my friend. I mean, just this afternoon, there was this guy waiting at the bus stop, right? And he asked me, what time's the bus coming? And I told him, and, you know, we had, we had a nice conversation about his life, and I really enjoyed that. And Mr. Brewer, I remember we spoke about the Soapbox Derby, and that was really interesting to me, right? Like, I loved hearing about your experience with that. And I think that's why I'd be a good Youth Commissioner. I wouldn't just bring my own ideas. I would bring the ideas of all the different people that I consider my friends. I'm not just the sum of the titles that I've held, but I'm the sum of the people that I've met. Thank you. Oh, I dropped the.
Mic drop.
Here we go. All right, thank you.
Excellent, thank you. And I love that everyone's cheering for each other. That just speaks volumes. Thank you. Next up is Manjot Rai, followed by Jenny Ing.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and respected Councilmembers. My name is Manjot Rai, and I'm a rising junior at Consumnis Oaks High School in the Medical Pathway. To start off, it is an honor to stand before you tonight as a candidate for the Elk Grove Youth Commission, representing the diverse and dynamic youth of our community. My path to this very moment in itself has been shaped by transformative experiences, ones that have broadened my worldview and encouraged me to take on roles that I once thought were out of reach. Growing up as a shy kid, I understand how hard it can be to find your own voice, especially for teenagers who sometimes can't put what they're going through into words in a world that often favors extroversion. I questioned whether I could ever make any sort of meaningful impact, but my perspective completely changed when I had the privilege of participating in the 2023 Elk Grove Civic Summer Program. I got to hear from Madam Mayor, Vice Mayor, and the respective Councilmembers and other city professionals who are trailblazers that are actively making a difference in our community. Hearing from Mayor St. Allen specifically, a Sikh American woman like myself who is so accomplished, inspired me and many others to make contributions of our own. I also had the opportunity to intern within the Budget Division of the Elk Grove Finance Department, and this exposure to public service helped me realize that I really could be a catalyst for positive change. So, I decided to step up. I challenged myself and became the secretary at my school's Metagaze and Research Club. I'm also an active volunteer of student-led organizations, including NHS, CSF, and KEE Club. From this, I learned that I am so much more than a letter in a gradebook or a college admissions decision. I learned that Elk Grove is so much more than our differences, but the things that bring us together. I concluded that every individual, regardless of their background or personality, has unique contributions to offer, and I believe that true progress can only be achieved when we create a space where everyone's opinions, ideas, and perspectives are celebrated. In my mission to create that space, I would love to join this Youth Commission. I envision things such as career-oriented workshops for high schoolers and online youth forums to address pressing youth issues. So, if I had the honor of being a part of the Elk Grove Youth Commission, I promise to help work towards a community where everyone, including young people, feel heard and valued. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, so done. Next up is Jenny Ing, and then Mayor Karatwal.
Good evening, Mayor St. Allen and Vice Mayor Spees and City Councilmembers. My name is Jenny Ing, and I'm an incoming senior at Franklin High School. Despite only being able to serve one year on the Youth Commission, I want to emphasize my strong dedication I will pour into this short timeframe. I'm sure my main concern with seniors might be time commitment. Therefore, I want to emphasize my genuine passion for improving our city and specifically prioritizing the youth. Currently, I intern under Assembly Member Sophie Nguyen, where I was able to present and help organize a youth job fair. I recognize that finding employment is a struggle that the youth faces, especially during the summer, and especially important for those that come from low-income and first-generation backgrounds. As a first-generation American myself, who works a part-time job to support myself, being able to assist in helping other youth find summer jobs made me feel happy that I was able to give back to the community. While issues of mental health, academic stresses, and more still remain prevalent in the youth community for us to address, I was glad that I was able to recognize one issue, employment, and help organize an impactful event for the youth. In addition to community events, attending the Sunday Fun Day event last weekend opened my eyes for what our city and the Council, Council is capable of and always will be, connecting people together. I believe that the youth is our future, and by attending these events as a youth member, it has taught me what it means to be present, be active, and bring people together. Even if it's only for one term, I will diligently make an effort to attend as many community events and vote on behalf of the youth, stressing the importance of being an active citizen in our city. Therefore, I hope you consider me as a strong candidate for the Youth Commission. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Mayor Karatwal, followed by Adrian Bayardo.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. I'm Mayor Atwal, a rising senior at Franklin High School, and I'm also from the Civic Summer Group, and I was one of the speakers. Hopefully, you remember me. And exposed to many new opportunities in the seminar, the Youth Commission stuck out to me as a way for my voice to be recognized, just as I want to recognize the youth and their struggles. My passions for art and engineering correlate with my value for community. From putting in hours on late nights towards cards for senior homes to vying for a civic career in civil engineering, the things my passions become most enjoyable when I impact the people here. See, the things I love and the valued disciplines of our city are best appreciated and served with community ties, not just enjoyed by a lofty population. Having interned in the Engineering Services Division just across the street at City Hall, where I did run into Madam Mayor yesterday, I've not only dealt with numbers, worked on projects, and learned about policies, I've witnessed firsthand how the city collaborates with its residents. For instance, when creating amenities like the Aquatic Center, Public Works must carefully select the lowest bidder that meets government requirements, ensuring that taxpayer dollars are utilized efficiently. The same principle could be applied to helping the youth. Even with minimal resources, it's possible to uplift our youth for a fair chance, especially pushing those opportunities to the overlooked or the reluctant. During the seminar of the Civic Summer Program, I noticed how the Youth Commission, the many public events held by Jordi Moreno, and also mentioned by our city manager, and even just public comment, aren't very well-known by the youth. A root cause of youth issues like mental illness and underage substance use derives from their detachment from community. But still, I can see that Elk Grove has expanded on that. From the many applicants from the Youth Commission, the expansion of Civic Summer, and also the visual arts initiatives at District 56, I can say I'm very proud to be a resident at Elk Grove because the very things that are important to me, I see blossoming in our community. I want to help produce a community that invites people back, not asks them to leave, a community that fosters inclusivity and encourages people to come together. So, I'd hope for your support in appointing me as a voting member of the Youth Commission. And just like you, Councilmember Suwin, I want to be a civil engineer, so you stand out as a very big role model to me. And also, you, Madam Mayor, another Sikh Indian woman to me, very inspiring. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Adrian Bayardo is next, followed by-- Adrian Bayardo is next, followed by Audrey Meyer.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council members. My name is Adrian and I've been alive for 16 years and all 16 of them have been lived in Elk Grove. I'm an incoming junior at Elk Grove High School and I've been interested in joining the youth commission for about a year now. And during my time at Elk Grove High School, I believe I've accumulated experience from a variety of activities in my community that would make me a well-qualified candidate for a position on the commission. I am the editor-in-chief of Elk Grove High School's newspaper and this position has allowed me to gain experience working with peers, but not only my own peers in the newspaper, as well as students in the Elk Grove High School TDA program. I've had to navigate student relations and at times editors and designers don't agree. And I've had to come to agreements with people and teachers on some disagreements. And I believe this experience is what makes me well-suited to work on a commission with my peers. As well as being an editor-in-chief, I am also a member of Elk Grove High School's mock trial team, which I am now the captain of. In my years as a mock trial student, I've worked together with my teammates and in 2022, we won the Sacramento County Mock Trial Competition and represented Elk Grove High School at the state level. We performed well and it's been an honor over the years to represent my school. I take great pride in mock trial as it has allowed me to practice public speaking and working under pressure. In mock trial, I am required to speak in front of real attorneys and real judges as they judge my performance in real time. This experience has made me more comfortable with public speaking and interacting with people that I may not be familiar with, which I believe is an important skill to be a part of the youth commission. But I believe most important of all, my passions are not limited to what roles I have in school. Outside of the classroom, I have advocated for LGBTQ youth in my community by testifying in front of both houses of the California Legislature, the Assembly, and the Senate on behalf of AB 5, also known as the Safe and Supportive Schools Act. Because as an LGBTQ student myself, I personally know the hardships that many youth in my community face and I am devoted to doing my best to assist them in any way possible. The desire to improve my community is what drove me to apply for the youth commission in the first place. And I would love the opportunity to be able to collaborate with my peers to develop solutions to real issues that teens like me face in our community, such as poor mental health and in general, not feeling like they belong in their community. I believe that I, as a transgender student, could provide a unique perspective if selected to serve on the Elk Grove Youth Commission. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Next up is Audrey Meyer, followed by Anish... Oh, let's see. Anshuman Purohit. Please correct me when you come back up here. I know I'm butchering the name. My apologies.
Hello, Mayor and members of City Council. First, I'd like to thank you for allowing me the opportunity to speak to you all tonight. My name is Audrey Meyer and I am a rising senior at Kasumus Oaks High School and I'm part of the Coding and Robotics Pathway. I am an active member of my school, both academics-wise and in extracurriculars. I'm in National Honor Society, California Scholarship Federation, and I'm also secretary of CO Chess Club and co-president of CO Computer Science Honor Society. These positions have given me valuable leadership skills and I've also learned a great deal about working with, understanding, and supporting others to achieve a common goal. Additionally, I have a lot of experience working with youth and participating in youth programs outside of school. I have been a volunteer at Elk Grove Library for the past year and a half and have participated in many different programs benefiting children, such as the Summer Lunch Program, in which we give free meals to children under 18, along with craft activities that occur during the school year. Most recently, I've been helping out with the Summer Lunch Program, where we not only give out meals, but also run movies, play music, and give children opportunities to be creative, giving them the chance to draw or make crafts. Holding events like these that go beyond the intended purpose can bring so much more meaning to participants. And I thoroughly enjoy seeing the happiness that is brought to children's and even parents' faces when realizing that they receive and learn so much more than expected. Working at the library has shown me that even one seemingly small event can contribute so much to one's happiness and be so meaningful in one's life. I see how much excitement and joy is created because of these events that are put on and I would love to see that extended beyond just Elk Grove Library, simply so kids and teens in the community can just be kids and teens and have fun. I also believe greater promotion of city events would greatly add to the success of these events. I myself, like many of my peers, don't really watch the news and instead stay updated primarily through social media. So I think it's great that the youth commission regularly updates on social media. However, I also suggest implementing communication with schools to publicize youth commission events. Simply reaching out to schools and asking them to let their students know, possibly in school broadcast news or weekly newsletters about youth commission events, would have a much greater impact and lead to greater awareness of these events for youth in Elk Grove. Being a part of the Elk Grove Youth Commission would allow me to make unique contributions to my community and help to make a difference in the lives of Elk Grove youth on a broader level. It would be an honor to be given the opportunity to do this and I greatly appreciate your consideration. Thank you and I hope you have a wonderful rest of your evening.
Thank you. Anshuman Purohit. You're going to correct me on my pronunciation, right? Unless I somehow got it right.
Hello, Mayor St. Allen and the Elk Grove Committee. My name is Anshuman Purohit and I'm part of the... I'm a student at Kasumus Oaks High School. I'm also a youth member at the Parks and Recreation Committee and I'm part of the... And I also volunteer at the food bank at Sac State. As a youth guy myself, I know the problems that the youth is facing today and I'm also a citizen of Elk Grove for over eight years. So I know what the problems Elk Grove citizens face. So I like to address those problems and try to solve them as maturely and as considerably as I can. And I like to help people as much as I can. That's why I like to volunteer at places that I know people need help at and I know that people... And I know those volunteer places like help as needed. As a member of the Parks and Recreation Committee, we handle the taxes and the funding that goes to the parks over here in Elk Grove. I think the parks in Elk Grove are one of the biggest things that Elk Grove people cherish on. It's one of the biggest things that we pride over. And we try to solve some of the issues that people come to us, like funding in some parks that are underfunded or they are not really maintained. So we try to solve those issues by collecting taxes and trying to benefit those parks that are not getting the support they need. We also try to get... We also try to get like... Try to get like organization to help us maintain those parks. And sometimes we get some... We try to get some volunteers to help us get like food banks. We try helping food banks and all those kind of places. I would love to be part of the youth commission so that we can help address some problems and try solving them as maturely as we can. Thank you.
All right, next up is Priyam Rangwal, followed by Mamina Nyazi.
Hello. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Councilmembers. My name is Priyam Rangwal and I'm a rising junior at Franklin, interested in computer science and cybersecurity at Franklin High School. My first time hearing about this commission was last year, when I first applied, but unfortunately, I was met with rejection. However, during the interim year, I've learned a lot more about the issues faced by our youth and our community. One issue that I would like to address is the usage of e-cigarettes in school bathrooms. One of AGSD's goals is to provide a safe learning environment for all of their students. However, the lack of enforcement of the prohibition of e-cigarettes is counterproductive to their goal. In fact, I personally know a student who has tried using staff bathrooms as a means to escape the second-hand smoke. Joining the youth commission would give me a platform to address these issues, enabling me to make a difference in the community I was raised in. In addition, as much as I understand the desire for diversity on the commission, I hope that my application is considered without taking into account the fact that my brother, Fratham, is present on the commission. Since we each have our own unique experiences that have shaped our own individual strengths and weaknesses. Thank you for your time and I hope you consider my application.
Thank you very much. All right, next up is Mamina Nyazi, followed by Abbas Chadri.
Good evening, Mayor and City Councilmembers. My name is Mamina Nyazi. I'm 14 years old and I'm about to begin my freshman year of high school at Saint Francis Catholic High School. I live on the rural side of Elk Grove on Bond Road and have lived in Elk Grove my entire life. I enjoy volunteering, playing soccer, and doing debate in Model U N. I am part of N C L, or the National Charity League, as the vice president of leadership, giving me experience in a leadership position. I also volunteer at Camp NeFesh, which is a free summer camp for refugee children. I volunteered for over 100 hours at Camp NeFesh. This has allowed me to connect with kids from all ages. I play centerback for San Juan Soccer Club and am a proven leader on and off the field. San Juan's 2009 team is one of the top in the country. I am also part of the Westfield Debate Team. I have been doing debate for about a year and hope to continue at my high school along with Model U N. Debate has allowed me to become a better public speaker. I have no problem voicing my opinion and hope to have that opportunity while on the commission. I want to be a part of the Elk Grove Youth Commission because I can make a difference in my community. I can get exposure to legislation and give representation to the rural area of Elk Grove. I can make a difference if appointed to the commission because I can bring my ideas for change to the commission and hopefully put them in motion. One idea I have is based on a fellowship that I am currently participating in. I work on a community farm and at the South Sacramento Interfaith Partnership Food Closet. At the farm, we grow food that is given back to the community. The farm is completely volunteer-run and I believe creating a similar farm in Elk Grove would be very beneficial. Youth could learn about agriculture and what it takes to grow food. Another idea I have is Career Day for high schoolers in the area. It would be organized with local businesses like doctors' offices, lawyers' offices, and banks in the area. The high schoolers would be able to go to the businesses and get exposed to the kind of work that they do and they could possibly find a profession that they want to go into. I want to go into legislature and being on the commission is a great way to expose myself to it. I firmly believe the rural side of Elk Grove does not have enough representation and if given the opportunity, I can bring that needed representation. I would be happy to lead events for the rural side of Elk Grove or at least help plan some. Overall, I would really like to be on the commission and I hope you consider me for this position. Please feel free to ask me any questions you have. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Abbas Chadri, followed by Eli Fisher Fernandez, who is our final speaker.
Hello, everyone, and good evening. My name is Abbas Chadri and I'm 15 years old and I believe I'll be a very valuable candidate to serve our community. As a youth in Elk Grove, I hope to have the chance to shape policies that prioritize the well-being and development of the youth members of this community. I'm currently a sophomore student in Kasumus Oaks who loves sports. I was involved with the Track and Basketball Association from my school. I enjoy spending my free time helping my community. I'm part of the LMSB Foundation, which provides services for Afghan refugees, where I am a volunteer at the food bank. I'm also part of Alto Hid, where they work with children to learn about our culture, history, and religion. In all, I have been involved in my community a lot and this youth commission position can help me even further getting involved with my community. Thank you for listening and the opportunity. Have a good evening.
Thank you, Abbas. And our final speaker is Eli Fisher Fernandez.
Good evening. I want to thank the mayor and all the members of the council for having me this evening. My name is Eli Fisher Fernandez. I'm becoming a junior at Kasumus Oaks High School. And... Oh, goodness. I'm so sorry.
That was fun. You got extra.
I wanted to make an impact. I didn't mean that exactly. I'm applying for the Elk Grove City Youth Commission. Elk Grove is changing. It's changed a lot over the last 10 years that we've lived here. It's changed a lot in the three years that you've been mayor. It's more vibrant, it's more diverse, and it's more youthful. And I emphasize that youthful because that's important. There's a big conception in this country that young people don't care about politics, that they don't care about political issues, that they don't care about those decisions being taken. I don't think that's true. I think if you go around, you talk to young people in our community and communities across the country, they care about the issues that are affecting them. They care about issues that are affected by politics, but they feel that... Excuse me. That there's a disconnect between them and the systems of government. And this committee, just the fact that this commission exists in our city shows how much progress we've made, how far we've come. And it allows our young people to really have their voices heard and to be brought to light and to be actually listened to by those making the laws. I think local politics especially is one of the most important things. It's never going to be on the headline of CNN. It's never going to be on the front page of a national newspaper. But local politics in particular has so much of an impact on the people's lives and on the livelihoods of our community. And I admire the work you've done and all the members of this council... My council member, Sergio Robles, who I had the chance to meet last year during the midterm elections where I worked for an election campaign and I really got the chance to get my hands dirty and to understand how politics works in this community and the impact that it can have on people's lives. I believe that I have the experience, I have the know-how, I have the voice, and I have the determination to really bring to light the issues that young people face and to bring their opinions to be heard. And I really want to thank you for this opportunity for having me here today. Thank you.
Thank you. Looks like we have one more speaker, George Murphy.
You look way more youthful, George.
Good evening and I'm not applying for the youth commission.
Are you applying for the youth commission?
No, I'm not. I'm on enough commissions right now. I... Wow. These guys.
Right.
You know we're in good hands. Our community is going to be well-served by these young folks. I think you all should be applauded for everything you've accomplished. But I'm here at night. I met Mamina just actually tonight for the first time. But we had a nice conversation the other day on the phone and her excitement, her desire, her enthusiasm that she expressed to me upon learning about the opening was overwhelming. She says she's from the rural area and I think she can bring a bit of a different perspective and also engage our community a little bit more. I'm here at night to support her potential nomination and placement on the youth commission and I know that our community would support her too. She was... I put out an email about a couple of months ago, I guess now, when the opening came up and she was the first one, the one that responded and hung in there. And I just think she would be a good addition to the youth commission. You heard her qualifications. She put out more tonight than I had heard before. So I am really impressed with her now. So just thank you for her consideration to the youth commission.
Thank you. All right, that concludes the public comment opportunity. And I have the very tough job to bring forth four names. First of all, I want to congratulate all the applicants and thank everyone. But I really want to thank all of you that came out tonight. You were all so dynamic, so dynamic that this is a very difficult decision. I wish all of you could have a seat on this commission. But what I will tell you is that these commission meetings are public and should you not be selected, you can still shape how this commission moves forward with your voice by showing up at the meetings and lending your voice through the public comments and the various programs that the youth commission may bring forward. But so please don't let this be the end. Let this be the beginning of that journey. To stay involved and hearing from all of you, I know our future is bright. I am so incredibly proud of each and every one of you. So with that, I'm going to do this... I'm going to bring three forward first and I'll give you my reasons and then... Pardon? Oh, yeah, absolutely. So what I wanted... So let's... You want to just general comments?
Yeah, just general comments.
I mean, you can or do you want to save them for... How do you want to do it? Is that...
We can save them for later.
Okay. So, three of you did that extra step. Because when you're, you know, when everyone's coming here and presenting this amazing case, then you look at all of these other considerations. So diversity is very important because we are a city that celebrates and welcomes everyone. So diversity of schools, districts, those matter. But your personal stories, your lived experiences, matter a lot because that is how we shape dialogue and have those conversations. And I think your respective voices and perspectives will be invaluable to not only the Youth Commission, but the city of Elk Grove. So three of you sent emails. Three of you made phone calls. Three of you came tonight. And three of you have diverse experiences and perspectives that I think would be such an amazing addition to the Youth Commission. So I'm going to bring three names forward first, and then we can have some discussion on the final. But the three names that I want for immediate consideration, first is Adiel Nelson, who we heard from. Your perspective, not only the passion serving the community, but as a young Jewish adult, your perspectives today are even more important than ever, and the work that you do in the community is so, so important. So thank you for all that you do. That's the first one. The second for consideration is Abbas Chadri, having the perspectives of a young Muslim who is serving our community with our Afghan refugees, working with Al-Misbah, and working with others. Our Muslim population continues to grow and having a voice so that we can expand our understanding to the youth, to make sure that they have a sense of belonging, not only to their schools, but to their city. So your perspective is invaluable. All of your perspectives are invaluable, but these three, that trifecta of the email, the phone call, and coming, all of those three, really put those three. The final, the third one, is Adrian Bayardo. Bringing your LGBT perspective is absolutely needed today more than ever. Your perspective as a trans youth. I applaud you, your courage in your school and being that voice. Today more than ever, that voice is so important. So thank you for wanting to step up. So those three are the names that I bring first for consideration, for the reasons that I've identified. Any comments from my right? Mr. Brewer, Mr. Robles?
I appreciate all the students who came and applied in this process because I know I've been sounding the alarm of having that extra four members with our four seniors leaving. And no matter where I was at, I always made mention of the Youth Commission needing four new members to fill the seats for this school year. And it's very important to have students who have the mindset and the empathy of where we are going as a community, but also being the voice of teens. As I was going through the application process, everyone was very well-written, very articulate. You have a wide range of perspectives of what everyone brings to the table. And as the mayor stated, please stay involved and engaged with the Youth Commission and with everything that is going on with the city of Elk Grove and with the Kasumis Community Services District because your voices are that important. They are valuable. Had I not been involved in Boy State back in nineteen eighty-six, I probably wouldn't be involved in politics and government. And this is a great example of that. And it was very heartening to hear everyone give their three-minute presentation on why they want to be on the commission and why they want to serve Elk Grove. We have eleven speakers here tonight out of twenty applicants. This was great. And I definitely encourage more of this exchange. And the names that the mayor had mentioned, those are the same three names that I had down because I had a chance to either talk to you on the phone, meet you in person, or exchange emails with you. And when you show that sort of dedication and passion for public service, that's a lot to be said for. So congratulations to all of you. And with the three names that the mayor mentioned, I'm definitely in support of them as well. I had a couple of individuals that I thought that would be here tonight, but they're not here. And I definitely encourage them to be involved as well, but as you say, if you're not here, you can't play. But I want to see them to still be involved as well.
Mr. Robles?
I'm just blown away by how amazing you guys are.
It's a hard job.
For real. You guys are super amazing. I'm like thinking, what was I doing at fourteen, which wasn't coming before City Council? I can assure you that. And not only that, but you guys are doing way more than your peers, right? Volunteering at food banks, volunteering in the community, having random conversations with folks. That's what matters, right? It's that connectivity that you have with individuals from community members. What you guys are doing is the right thing. And if you guys continue doing this, you know, volunteering in your community, like eventually later down the road, we're going to be helping you guys get elected, right? Or we're going to be helping you guys change the world. I mean, if I could offer everyone, you know? I'm just blown away by how amazing you guys are. You know, at fourteen and the seniors, the seniors who have applied as well, I'm just blown away. Like, for reals, you guys are pretty good, and I know that for reals isn't really a word, but, you know, this for the younger generation. Going to the nominations. Adrian, you know, I was at the Sunday Fun Day, and you came up and had a great conversation, and it's conversations like that, you know, connecting with folks. Got to meet you, hear a little bit of your story, and then also looking forward ahead in the future. I know that you're going to start looking at Cal State Northridge now, later down the road, just kidding. But, you know, I'm supportive of Adrian. And then, I don't want to butcher. Abbas Chadri? You gave me a call, right? So you called me. And at first, you know, that's what lobbying and pushing for yourself and doing that interaction, doing those extra steps, it's what makes a difference, and it definitely matters. And you did that all on your own, right? And sometimes we're like, well, we don't know who we know until you call folks and kind of do that. And as well as, now, I don't want to. Adiel. I have the accent, so I was going to come out like Adiel, you know? So Eddie, you know, thank you for emailing us. You emailed the whole council and made sure that, you know, this is who I am, this is what I've done, and continue wanting to serve and bring my own perspective. It's been amazing, and not just these three individuals, but everyone, everyone has been amazing. And still stay involved, stay engaged. And honestly, I say reach out. Mr. Fisher, I love the energy that you're bringing. Like, I sincerely, sincerely do, and going to have to see if we can provide an internship, right? Because the energy that you have is amazing, as well as Rafael. Like, seriously, that's what brings people and excites people, and it excites me, right? Because we're here to try to provide these programs and make sure that we have our amazing youth. And again, even if you, and this is for everyone, even if you don't, you know, get it, like, reach out. I'm starting to think, like, where can I plug these amazing individuals in our community so they can just stay involved and engage and create even a difference that, even if it's not on the Youth Commission, it's in someone's life, right? So I'll keep my comments short.
So you support the three?
I support the three.
Okay, and then just as an FYI, so I think my intern, are you out there, Ethan? Hi. So you have discretionary funds? And if you, one of these, you know?
That's exactly why my wheels were turning.
And great work. I mean, yeah. So there's many ways to plug us all in. So I will turn to my left and go to our council member soon.
Oh, right. Thank you, mayor. I just have to echo my colleagues. I mean, such an impressive group. Poised, charismatic, well-spoken. You really, as Commissioner Murphy mentioned, you know, the future is bright for our city, and it's really exciting to see the interest. You know, Mr. Fisher Fernandez mentioned about how the youth are interested in politics, and local politics at least, and what's happening in our city. And it's demonstrated here today by not just all the applications, but the turnout that all of you had. I was pleasantly surprised to see Ms. Ying, our intern from our office, who didn't tell us she was applying. It was a pleasant surprise to see you in the mix. And I would just add, like others have said about staying involved, you know, the Youth Commission, I mean, a lot of it may look good on, or does look good on your resumes, but you really have the opportunity to make a difference and leverage that role, whether you're on the commission or a participant, to connect with the community, to have all of us at the city, whether it's the council, the commissioners, the city staff, have your concerns and voices heard. And so please don't lose sight of that. You don't have to be on the commission to have a voice. I think the mayor made great choices, although I would say that it was difficult, but also easy because all of you are so great, and there's so many different ways that, you know, we could have looked at this, right? District representation, high school representation. And so I think couldn't go wrong with the individuals that were chosen. But again, please stay involved, and we're always available too. You don't have to be a commissioner either to reach out to us, as Mr. Robles mentioned as well. We would be happy to, you know, engage with you and guide you however we can and help you in whatever you want to do in your lives. So, thank you very much.
Vice Mayor, anything else?
Yeah, real quick, you know, I support the appointments that the mayor has made for the reasons that my counterparts have all mentioned. And, you know, I'll shorten it up with something that's a little bit cheesy, right? But I look at our youth as our gift to the world. You are here, you've lived here, you've grown here, you've instilled our community values, the things that we hold true and the things that are important to us. And soon enough, you'll go out into the world, you go to colleges, and you'll, you know, you'll go to jobs and things like that. And, you know, I look at it and think that we're giving great gifts to the world. And if I don't see you, I hope I see you again, right? I hope that you're back. But I know that we're sending great people out into the world to represent us. So, thanks.
Thank you. So we are moving forward with those three. Now the final seat, the hard part. So, I mean, it's literally everyone that showed up. It's everyone that showed up that sticks out. I think you all bring unique perspectives. Mayhem and Jolt, you did an amazing job. Eli, you did a great job. Momina, you did a wonderful, you know, I mean, just everyone. So now, what I would say is, let's look at our checklist, and where don't we have representation? Putting, you know, let's add the three new ones to the equation. But currently, our current Youth Commission makeup with those that are already on, we have Franklin High School, there's two representatives. We have two representatives from CO and two from Pleasant Grove. Of those, there are, five of them are Asian, Asian representatives, and then we have one Caucasian. That's part of the existing Youth Commission. And then we have the three that we just moved forward today. So putting that sort of in your thought overlay, I'd love to hear from you because I'm torn. And, you know, I don't want to be the bad guy, so you all get to share that with me. You get to share that with me.
Well, I appreciate your honesty on that.
It's hard, it's hard. But the other, the three were easy because of that trifecta, so it just made it so much easier. So now we have very well-qualified who showed up to speak and did an amazing job. Every single one of you did an amazing job. So let's look at the candidates that we have now in total. What are we missing?
I think you're still missing three in one, right?
Yeah, District One and Three.
But I don't think there's anyone, was there anyone here?
That spoke?
Rafael.
From Three?
Was one, no, one. But no one spoke from Three.
Well, Manjot lives in Three. Manjot lives in Three and attends Four, so there is that one.
That's right.
And we don't have anyone in Three. Does that work for you? Unless you're passionate about?
That would work for me, but I'm fairly certain that Councilman Soon would, not necessarily. I mean, if we're talking about three in one.
So we have?
You can't go wrong. I mean, I think there's.
There's no, are you passionate about anyone? Mr. Brewer, it looks like you're contemplating something there.
When you look at the breakdown of districts and high schools, I mean, there's definitely a deficit for Districts One and Three. If we were wanting to make it more of a balance between each of the city districts, it's really difficult to make because some of the candidates were not present tonight and didn't show up. Manjot showed up.
I would like for us to consider those that came, to be honest.
As the saying goes, unfortunately, if you're not here, you cannot play. But, yeah, I mean, Manjot, he represents.
She.
Or she, lives in District Three, goes to Kasumis Oaks. And we have a good wealth of students from Kasumis Oaks.
We have a lot of four.
On the.
It's District Four is well-represented.
Our District Four, all the applicants.
And then you have District Two as well. But District Two, we now have Adiel from District Two.
You have Eddie.
And Adrian Bayardo. So District Two is represented.
But Momina does represent a rural area where.
Right.
Rural and an alternative, you know, not our comprehensive EGUSD school.
The rural perspective is a unique perspective as well.
So that's equally important.
I mean, if I were to choose, I would choose Momina Niyazi.
I'm good with Momina.
Yeah, I mean, either Momina or Manjot, yeah, because I think that would keep it.
Either Manjot or Momina.
You keep it three female, three male.
So we just added two, is the thing. We just added two for two. We don't have three.
Right.
So from that perspective, I would say Manjot.
Two male, one female, and we have a good balance of male to female on the commission right now.
It keeps it even, actually, if you, yeah.
So you're in favor of Manjot?
I can go with Manjot, yeah.
Because Manjot is in District Three, where we don't have.
Right.
For no other reason than we want all, we're trying to get diversity of representation, so.
I can support Manjot.
I've heard two, so I think from the perspective of having someone from District Three, and like I said, they all did a great job, so that one's really hard, but from District Three, I think Manjot.
Yeah, all due respect, Commissioner Murphy, I appreciate, you know, your testimony.
So I will bring forth Manjot Rai's name because we don't have representation in District Three. And like I said, all of you were exceptional. If we didn't pick you, again, those seniors that are going to graduate out, please come back. We absolutely give consideration for those that reapply. It's a big deal, but stay involved. So I would like to bring forth Manjot Rai. Are we good? Yes.
Sounds good.
All right, all right, we have our four. Thank you. Thank you, everyone, and thank you for supporting each other. I am proud of all of you, your enthusiasm and support for one another really also, you know, taught us adults how to be our best selves. Because that, you know, even though it could have come at your own expense in your nomination, you were there for each other, and I just think that's absolutely beautiful. So thank you. Thank you, and congratulations to the four. Great work ahead, looking forward to your service. And for the others, thank, again, please continue to stay involved, and continue to stay involved in your schools as well. Thank you. With that, we'll move on to our next item. There is a next item. And that is council comments, reports, and future agenda items. I'll start to the right. Anything to report out? Councilmember Robles?
So we recently went to go tour a couple zoos. We did, well, as council, we toured the Fresno Zoo, and I was fortunate to go to a conference in New York where I toured the Bronx Zoo, was able to kind of hear about the exhibits that they have there and the development process. Very informative and very unique, as well as in the conference, we came back, or at least I came back with several new perspectives and difference on how to promote small businesses, as well as trying to bring new opportunities for funding for the cities as far as Walmarts for EV charging stations and as well as Toyota. So I'm pretty excited for this, definitely gonna make sure that we continue to do that, and that's kind of what I have.
Thank you. Councilmember Brewer?
No items to report.
Councilmember Shuen?
Regional San and Secog were canceled this month, so nothing to report.
Vice Mayor?
Sacramento Public Library tomorrow. We'll see you there. All right, and that's it, that's all I have.
So I had SACRT and then EGUSD two by two today. Before we adjourn, I do want, I asked our city attorney to provide feedback on the use of our equipment as it relates to public comments. For PowerPoint presentations, do we have a policy? What is the policy? Because in my own research, I didn't see any other cities that actually did something like that. Apparently, we have a policy that we don't follow.
Would you like me to address that?
Please put that into the record.
We do have a policy that was adopted in 2017, amended in 2013. And to your specific point, Mayor, the policy does not specifically allow, in fact prohibits, use of PowerPoint presentations and city equipment for general public comment. What has happened over the years after this was adopted, the council has provided some leeway and allowed that from time to time. And that has sort of evolved into allowing it all the time, or many times, not always. But the actual policy does not allow use of the equipment at general public comment. It is only for use during specifically agendized events, matters. So if the council wants to adhere to the language of the policy and go back to how it was written, you can certainly do that.
The policy that already exists.
Correct, the policy that is on the books right now.
It's a policy that exists, and it's not stifling any communications. They're still free to send us.
Yeah, I think that's an important point. Thank you for bringing that up. So, no, this isn't stifling any ability of anyone to address their elected officials, specifically the city council. This simply regulates the use of city equipment. It has nothing to do with the ability to comment, the ability to speak, ability to address your elected officials. So if they have materials they would like the city council to see, whether they're appropriate for public viewing or not, and we saw something like that tonight, they can present those materials to the city council in whatever form they like, unredacted, and the city council will have those available to view. Those materials will also be available as public documents for anyone who would like to view them. All this policy does is simply provides that you are not allowed to use the city's equipment as part of your presentation, but absolutely, you can present whatever material you would like to the city council for consideration.
Okay, so moving forward, just, I, you know, I intend to adhere to our pre-existing policy that previous councils have adopted, but then perhaps went sideways along the way, including myself, and not knowing that there is a policy. So I'm going to be following our policy moving forward. And then anybody who does have information to share, we continue to all be available to receive it in person or electronic communications. So with that.
If I could ask a question?
Yes, please.
So when someone sends a presentation, we'll inform them of that when they do, right? Do we also intend to remind people at the beginning of each session that we don't do that? Because I guess what I'm, you know, someone next time may say, well, wait a minute, you did last week, why, right? So is that going to be part of our, the documents that we have on our agenda? I'm just trying to figure out.
Why do you need to read something into the record, you're thinking, like, as a reminder?
Read something into the record, you know, the clerk may.
I mean, at the next meeting, perhaps I will restate the policy.
Yeah, it may take a meeting or two to get back to where we were.
Right, but I think, but I think a, you know, a discussion late in the evening, they probably won't hear, right? And so it's probably a benefit to state it at the beginning of the meeting next time. And, of course, in the emails, that of course, because folks may send them ahead of time. In fact, they're required to, right?
And if we can maybe post it on the agenda, too.
The clerk can inform them when they.
Exactly, when this happens, and then maybe make it clear on the public comment portion. I think a few meetings, as we go back into conducting professional business meetings, so that reports are for staff to conduct city business. But we have plenty of opportunity personally, through many forms of communication, to receive all information, so.
I would just prefer that they, although some will act surprised, I'm just suggesting that we make sure that they can't say they are surprised.
Right, it's a policy that exists.
It's a policy, and Vice Mayor speaks, if they send it in, so the policy requires for any presentation that is legitimate for use, it has to be sent in 24 hours in advance. So if something is sent in, now that I've re-reviewed the policy as recited this evening, then the submitter can be informed, I'm sorry, that's not gonna be used for the, you can't use the equipment, but don't worry, we'll send it off to the council members, they can do it. So you'll still see it, it just won't be on the screen.
Yeah.
That's all, okay.
All right, I have nothing else. So with that, we will adjourn our meeting at 9:17 PM. Thank you, everyone.